Call this meeting to order. You will join me in a moment of silent prayer reflection. Terry, call the hall, please.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Pat Mooney?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
John Maston?
Here. Please stand and join me for questions.
My flag is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda this evening is 1.5. That's a bond for putting together us 1091K. It would be you, Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board. According to Arizona statute 15-491K, the district is required to hold a hearing annually between September 1st and October 31st until bond proceeds are spent, at which time an update of the progress of capital improvements financed through bonding is discussed, and at which time the public is permitted an opportunity to comment. The bond report gives a summary of each bond project and the combined expenditures to date. So in this PowerPoint presentation, as noted in statute, this is the opportunity for the staff and community to be updated as to the annual expenditures so far to date, actually so far for this fiscal year. And noted in here is the actual Page 5, or what looks like Page 5 of the voter pamphlet that went out back in, just prior to November of 2016, which went out to the voting public so that they could see the dollar amounts in which, in each of the areas in which the bond proceeds would be expended. You'll notice on the column in the middle there, the dollar amounts on the left are the amounts listed in the bond pamphlet, and then the dollar amounts on the right are the expenditures to date. This includes all the way, going back to May of 2017 when the bond proceeds first began to be expended. So you can see to date, as far as issuance one, we have a total of $10,305,000 that have been spent from May-ish, May 1st, to this point. There's about $6 million left to spend. We'll review kind of what's coming up here in the near future, slides coming up. But you can see that we are in line with all of the reported areas on Page 5. A major topic of discussion in the past, and I want to just clarify here, now that we have the athletic field, the stadium, Lee Barnes Stadium, complete up at the high school, there was a lot of discussion, not just in this meeting, with Governing Board members and community. There's a lot of comments out in the public as well regarding the cost of that facility and where those dollars would come from. So in this voter pamphlet, this guide on Page 5, in communicating with bond counsel, typically all of the expenditures, budgeted amounts, would be right here in this non-administrative purposes section of constructing, remodeling, and renovating facilities. Because the district at the time decided to also show the community that we were serious about expenditures to our athletic facilities, there was monies broken out to show the public that there would be monies actually expended for these facilities, that we couldn't just tie it up all up here in the top and redistribute it in different ways. So you can see that Lee Barnes Stadium, it was budgeted for about 1.5 that was broken out in the athletic field section, but the remaining dollar amounts was, did fall under the category of construct, remodel, and renovative school facilities because that's exactly what that project was. It was a renovation and a renovation of the facility there at that particular site. So you can see everything is in line thus far, transportation and down here in administrative costs, those are costs that are directly related to the district facility here on this campus that we are currently seeing. So moving forward, just kind of a visual account of the expenditures, I just wanted to post a few photos of what did compromise, or what did comprise of the figures on the other slide. So you see the improvements that we've made, there's the facility there at Lee Barnes Stadium. We've had computer labs installed at a few locations in the district, several buses that are now in our possession, we ordered three last year and we've received those. There's three more on order this year that we should receive later on this spring. You'll notice that there are some new equipments, pieces of equipment that we see up here. We did order per the Citizens for Havasu School Guide, we talked about purchasing new equipment for maintenance and for our facilities, a few trucks that were purchased for maintenance. This screenshot here is the financial software that was communicated and the new upgrade went into effect on July 1st of this fiscal year, so just a couple months ago. So we are now running a new HR component and a new finance software within the district, and that is also pushed over and out into the individual sites where we all continue to get trained because it's definitely a learning curve. So in progress right now, actually tomorrow, we have a meeting where we're going to begin to finalize the scheduling of flooring, a flooring campaign that will take place across the district. That will hopefully come before this board next month to approve funding for a district-wide flooring campaign of replacing carpet throughout the district. We also will probably replace some of the linoleum type surfaces in certain areas, but our goal is to replace carpet throughout the district. And more details will come up next month, hopefully, as we seek approval to procure and move forward with that installation. Transportation, as I mentioned before, three buses on order for this year, they're due to arrive in early spring. Technology, as far as bond funds, because this is a bond fund report, there are no other major projects remaining for this issuance, for this particular bond issuance. There was a recent RFP that went out for camera surveillance systems. That would possibly use some existing bond funds because there's, were limited as to how much we can spend for technology in a particular issuance. There are some remaining funds for that project in the bond funds area, but most of that will probably come from E-rate or district additional assistance to make that project a reality. And then you'll see there in athletic fields, because the Phase 1 has been completed and the football team just finished a season up there, our home games, will begin Phase 2 of athletic fields, it looks like around summer or fall, summer of 19 or fall of 19, to begin the preliminary work for Phase 2 of the baseball facility down below the Athletic Field Stadium there at the high school, as well as Thunderbolt. So that's what we have as far as the report on the annual, the annual activity of bond funds for the district.
Mr. Murray?
The E-rate money that we have, is that not a side effect of our technology acquisitions through the bond?
Correct. There's, and Jamie, this is prior to Jamie coming here, before Jamie arrived, but that is true. There are some bond-funded projects with technology that happened earlier in the bond issuance, which were E-rated, they were eligible for E-rate funds, government funds, as kind of, not a kickback if you will, but a reimbursement. And, yeah, kickback in this line, and government is not a good thing.
No.
But if it's the government kicking it back to you, then that's all right. It's a reimbursement of funds that was a result of other projects that were recently completed, so we have that money as a reimbursement that we could use to fund other projects. And then discussions or questions, and this is an opportunity for the community to make comment as well, if anyone has comments.
I just wondered if we'd be posting it under, on the website?
Yes, this PowerPoint will be on the website, that's correct.
Are they going to fence off the baseball field?
That would be our hope, and that's where we have to get involved with the preliminary work. Our hope is to continue the fence line down and around the facility.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Murray. Item two on our agenda is our call to the public. We have, it looks like we may have three. The first one is Mrs. Wendy Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. My name is Wendy Moore, and my husband and I are 30 residents of Lake Havasu. We both graduated from high school and are continuing to raise our family in the school district. The reason I'm here today is that I am on a mission of gratitude for the next several weeks to show my appreciation for all that this community has done to step up and make a difference in our schools, and more specifically to bring Rachel's Challenge to Lake Havasu. So thank you. Thank you to the Governing Board for approving the Rachel's Challenge events, and a special thank you to Nicole Cohen for proposing this to the board for approval. And thank you to Superintendent Asire and all of this whole district staff that worked so hard with our kids to get the Friends of Rachel Challenge clubs up and running. Mrs. Mulligan at Thunderbolt has done a fantastic job promoting the club on social media, and I love to see the students involved and showing compassion and kindness. Shannon Williams and several teachers at the high school have also been gearing up their clubs by doing fundraisers, and again, it is awesome to see the kids making that commitment to each other and the school. I would also like to personally thank everyone that helped the Rachel's Challenge in our community, and especially to the community that worked so hard to put it all, excuse me, especially the committee that worked so hard to put it all together. I see some of you in the room, but I know there are a lot of other events happening tonight, and some are busy with their businesses and whatnot. So I'll reach out to those people outside of the meeting as well, and we have some other thank you messages in the works. So if you're in the room, would you please stand up and be recognized? Superintendent Diana Sire, Nicole Cohen, Jamie Kestadagel, Shannon Williams, Andrea Heller, Tracy Presley, Marcia Cox, Captain Stephanie Lueris. Thank you so much for being here. I'd also like to add Pastor Jeff Warner, and Cameron Moses, and Michelle Lynn. These individuals committed countless hours and resources to meetings, emails, phone calls, community engagements, and really pulled off what I think was an incredible project to bring Rachel's Challenge to Lake Havasu. This included fundraising over $50,000 in about six months, getting the word out through social media, radio spots, our churches, service clubs, local businesses, and organizations. And on August 27th, this committee put together and orchestrated a community event that had over 1,100 people attend. Lynn's Little China fed those 1,100-plus people, and on that same day, organized and facilitated events in all of the schools and cities and students in our city. We had over 50 volunteers from Calvary Baptist Church that helped to set up chairs and to greet and love on people that were attending. The city also donated the use of the Aquatic Center facilities and staff to make the event a huge success. Then during the week of September 17th, this committee pulled together again over 100-plus volunteers from the district and community to help facilitate Rachel's Challenge chain reaction weekend. They transported over 500 sophomore students from Lake Havasu High School in Tellusis to the ASU campus during that week, and then all those students were fed, and volunteers from each day attended, from our local restaurants, Chabones, College Street Brewery, Chugru's, Mud Shark, and La Vida Dolce. So again, thank you for all that you did to help organize Rachel's Challenge and make it a giant success in Lake Havasu City. In closing, I would like to say how thankful I am, I'm going to get emotional, and how blessed we are to live in a community that answers the call to serve when asked. We are in an extraordinary time in our community and our country at large, but I would like to remind everyone that we are all on the same side. We are all doing this for the kids who will be our future leaders. We are doing this for the community, and we are doing this for the teachers. And I think all of, I think you all can see, we can do great things if we all work together, trust each other, get past the fear of conflicts, and move forward together to solve challenges and make things happen. Thank you for your time.
Someone's spotting.
Yes, sir.
So I can't direct, I can do nothing but necessarily direct staff or correct facts at a call of the public, and I need to correct one of your facts.
Okay.
You forgot yourself. So thank you, Wendy, for all of your time. Next, we have Amy Olmer.
So I'd like to let the board know that Amy is here as a result of a conversation that Sandy Bries and Tellusis and I had, that actually is a result of Rachel's Challenge. And so I do want to bring that up, that one of the things that our committee tried to do through Rachel's Challenge was bring the entire community together, not just the public school students from Lake Havasu and the like. And so Dr. Bries has been including us as well then in some of the events at Tellusis so that we can benefit, and so Amy's here to talk about one of those events.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for letting me have this opportunity. My name is Amy Olmer, and I am a mother and a teacher here in our little city, and I just want to say thank you so much because, first of all, I want to say, you guys are probably wondering why Tellusis is in the room at a board meeting. So one of my biggest things is that we do one thing, and that is to lead our children, and that is why I teach, is to lead our children here in our city. So thank you, teachers, for always doing what you do every day to your best ability. So with that being said, I had the opportunity to put together a community event, and this is my second year doing it. It was very successful last year, and just wanted to get you guys involved with it because we are one. I am a Division 1 athlete, I went to UNLV on a basketball scholarship, and when I was there, I was able to play against people that were paraplegic, and they brought their wheelchairs and were able to compete against them. Now, as an athlete, we're like, yeah, right, it's like, you know, you just sit in the chair and, you know, I could shoot hoops and all that, but it is a challenge. So I reached out to our national team from Arizona, there's a national wheelchair basketball team called the Fedents Suns, and they are coming to our city. They're coming November 2nd on a Friday night to compete against our community. They're bringing extra chairs, and the extra chairs, every chair that they bring is worth $5,000. So they're generous to bring extra chairs so we can have this community event. What way to show our children that we can persevere through any trial and tribulations that we face. Some of these guys have been born with the trial that they face, some of them have gone through situations that brought them into a wheelchair, and here we are complaining each day, and they wake up every day and persevere in a wheelchair, and they're paraplegic every single day. So on November 2nd, it's a Friday night at 7:00, we would love to have everyone come and join us in our jam to see our community compete against these individuals. Now, it's going to be the Globetrotter game, home Globetrotter, because they are super good, they are a national team that competes around the United States. Now, with that being said, we have our police chief, Dan Doyle, we have fire chief, Brian Davis, we have our executive coming from Sutton Lake, he's going to be competing as well. We also have coach Mike Washington from our high school that will be competing in a wheelchair. We also have some board members that will be, Dave Lang, we also have our mayor, Mark Nixon, and Cal Shealy will be on their, on our squad. We also have a few agents and any teacher that would like to step up and be a part of it, and get in a chair and try to compete one-on-one with them, we would love to have you there. The event is called Made to Be Awesome, the reason why we are truly here to be awesome. We are brought into this world to be awesome and to plug into that awesomeness, and that's really what us teachers do every day, is to show and guide our children that they are awesome, it's just matter how we unplug that awesomeness. So again, it's five dollars to get into the event, and if they wear their school shirt, children get to come in free. At halftime, if their name gets drawn, the children will be able to compete in a free throw contest, or there's also going to be a relay race also in a wheelchair. So our children who get selected at halftime will be able to see what it's like to be paraplegic for just like a few minutes. They are strapped from the feet and the waist, so they can't step out, and either can our community members who think that they're going to step out and make a hoop, so it's not going to work. And so again, we are truly all made to be awesome, so this is my second year putting it together, and it is so exciting to see just what we can do and make our community one, and to, you know, tell our children whatever we face and whatever we come across that we can be awesome in our own form. So thank you again. If you have any questions, I also sent it to Denise Corona to see if we can get the flyer approved and out to our school district and our children here in our community, so thank you.
And last but not least, we have Matt Dickerson.
Hi, good evening, members of the board, administration, and members of the audience. I have nothing to share nearly as awesome as those two presentations, I'm just here to introduce myself. I work for the Arizona Education Association out of the Flagstaff office, and I support the Lake Havasu City Education Association. And in the 18 years that I've been with AEA, I have yet to attend a board meeting here in Lake Havasu, so I'm happy to be here. What I saw from those two presentations earlier is that you have a community that supports your school system, and that's very important. Just, what, two years ago, the community narrowly, but they did support your bond and your override, and I think that's amazing, and I hope that continues. And I think with AEA and all of our local associations like the Lake Havasu City Education Association, there are many ways that we try to support and collaborate with school districts. We have many of the same interests, we don't always see eye to eye on everything, but the important thing is, I think the speaker before me said that we are here for, you know, the kids, we are here for the teachers, and the staff, the employees, all the employees, because we believe that strong public schools are the basis, one of the strong foundations and basis of our democracy in America. So again, wanted to say hello. You know, the AEA is committed to quality of public education for all, many of our core values, one of those is fairness and equity and respect for all, for employees, you know, for students. We do that with each other, it's important, learning as a community commitment, I think we've seen that as well. Certainly, the Red for Ed movement wasn't, was not born out of AEA, but certainly was something that we supported greatly, and I think it's helped. It's brought in a number of new dollars to the district so that we can obviously help you with your retention and recruitment of staff. You know, we're still in a crisis statewide, I don't have to probably, you know, ask you, you all know, with the number of teacher vacancies statewide, so we have, we still have work to do. And so having that relationship with the Education Association with employees, the AEA is not just, you know, a building in Phoenix, or an office in Flagstaff, or around the state, it is made up of dedicated individuals, employees, anyone's eligible to belong to the AEA to support their professional association, so we can, you know, do good work and support school districts as well. And so, you know, that's what we're about, so just wanted to say hello, so thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is recognition of visitors. Superintendent Sire, you want to do the first one? And no visa problems.
All right, we would like to invite, there we go, Bill and Elaine Rosan. My name gets mispronounced all the time, why do you say it?
Roseon.
Roseon, okay, and Bobby and Shelley Cairns to please come up for a moment. For those of you in the room, and of course our board members, will recall that this last spring, we did our high school graduation at the Speedway. And we had a whole lot of trepidation going through the year on what was going to happen by having our graduation at the Speedway, and it was, it was very interesting because after it occurred, we had people saying, "We should have it there next year." Great seating, all of that, and of course, we didn't have a stadium at the time. But what a lot of people don't realize, really, there are two things. One is that Mr. and Mrs. Cairns and Mr. and Mrs. Rosan, did I say it right? They did a whole lot of work to get that stadium ready for our high school graduation, and they donated the stadium use, so they, there was not a dime that we had to spend as a district in order to use the Speedway. Derek, you just, you can't imagine if you were not part of that process this last year, how much work that was. And so we would like to express our gratitude and thanks to you as our community supporters, and we have a pot, which I will let Mr. Maston. You want to read it?
Pretty cool.
You want to come up and read it?
You know, Bobby called me, could you guys hear me all right? Bobby called me and said, "The school's looking to place for graduation." And I said, "Count us in." So Bobby got the principal out here, and we had a little talk, walked around the place, and the cleanup, actually, I'm very proud of our track, we cleaned up a lot, but having the graduation, we got a lot of summer cleanup done prior to our school. It was great, and I'm excited, we were thrilled, families thrilled, and honored to that graduation at the track, it was a big deal for us, and glad we were available to make this happen. I got a compliment on the class of 2018, the staff, I probably picked up six water bottles in three days, and they probably fell out of my golf cart. The place was clean, there was no burnouts and a pit, it was just great. The condition was just great. So we're very proud to be part of... Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, you want to read what it says?
I hold it here far enough away. This says, "In recognition to Havasu United High Speedway, Bill and Elaine Roson and Bobby and Shelley Kearns, community partners and gracious hosts. Lake Havasu High School 2018 graduation with appreciation with the governing board, Lake Havasu United High School District." And I have to say, as an employee of this wonderful district, that it was definitely an honor to be a part of it. And as a parent, my son got to walk on that racetrack that he races on every single Saturday night. I graduated there too. As a community member and as a parent, and just, again, like Bill said, being able to put something on, and yeah, we could do it again if we had to. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay. Next, we have a review of Crane Digital Curriculum Platform and Purpose. Mr. Gardner, Liz is going to do this, but I think you're going to pinch it for me.
Yes, I am. And actually, I have assistants. I was going to grab that microphone, but maybe Christina would do that. It'll rotate, it'll travel. So we had a request from the board to do a review of our Crane Digital Curriculum Strategies Platform. This was actually approved by the board in July of 2017 for the 17-18 school year, so we're in our second school year. And so what I wanted to do is give you a little bit of an overview of why we came to this point of adopting this resource. And then I have Christina Musselman and Lindsay Bitterman, who are here, who actually are going to live walk you through some things in the program so you can say, you know, this is what I can tell you, but here's what it actually looks like. So I appreciate both of those ladies being here this evening and willing to do that. What I wanted to give you is a little bit of background, and I realize that we've gone over some of this before, but many people in the audience have not heard this information. And so as we were talking about the Arizona context and where we were, the state board adopted new English Language Arts and Mathematics standards that were revised in December of 2016. And of course, we know that they're coming up. Just recently, Monday, adopted new social studies and science standards. And so I obviously made this slide before that happened on Monday. And then those revised standards from the 2016 are actually going to be assessed this year in the 2018-19 school year. So 17-18 was the transition year to use and learn those standards. Our district and our teachers have spent a lot of time developing pacing guides and lessons for the previous set of standards. And we had a very short window from the new adoption to totally revise those documents. And so after much discussion, the staff at the district level decided to make the recommendation to go with the Crane strategies because that had been developed and done through by teachers who were expert in the content area, and it would save us a lot of time and money to have a foundation to start from of a pacing guide with the new standards. And so the reason that we went here is we wanted to talk about the fact that there is instructional planning time provided for teachers, and thankfully, we've been able to increase that this year in terms of the time during the day. And what we have, hopefully, our teachers will do is actually use the standards from which today's instruction. So the idea is that teachers identify the standard that's being taught. They identify how the students are going to demonstrate mastery of that standard, how they've learned it, which is a form of assessment. It is formative assessment. They will identify then, once they've done that, what curriculum materials will support that content knowledge. And then from that, they identify the instructional strategies that will engage the students at that level of rigor. And so this is referred to as backward design. And what the Crane platform provides for us are really the first and second bullet there. The standard, what should be taught, what the level of rigor is for students to in fact show that they've learned it. It also provides the information on how they will be assessed on that standard. And so what we wanted in our district is initially with new standards and at that time, very few resources with which to go forward in planning, that teachers would have a shared understanding of the standards and what they mean, and that that's essential for our staff to have that. The idea that we aren't on the same page at the grade level and level of rigor for the standards that are appropriate for our students is part of the reason that there are gaps in our students' learning, when we see from school to school sometimes changes or differences in their results. So what we teach in the standards, of course, our curriculum resources are standard-driven, they're selected to match the standards, and this allows us to actually control our curriculum at the local level. So we can decide which resources we'll use to support those standards and how we utilize them. What the Crane offers us, it's referred to as the Dynamic Curriculum Strategies, it is not a curriculum. And I keep wanting, I want to repeat that over and over. Crane is not a curriculum. That is not what we adopted it as, and if people are looking for that, they will be disappointed because it is not a curriculum. What it is, is a pacing guide of standards that sets the standards and the level of rigor and the amount of time that should be spent on those standards throughout the course of a year by grade level. It's a resource for teachers, and there are some things that are in there that you could find in other places. But what it does is it brings those things together in one platform. And one of the issues that we have, and this is something that I know the board will have further discussion about, but most of the curricula that are out there that are available are actually designed for two large markets, and that's California and Texas. And so they tend to be very unaligned to individual state standards. And while the resources are there, they aren't necessarily locally driven in any way. And they may not also include the depth that we have decided to add in Arizona. So what this is, is a resource for the standards that's online, a digital platform. So what they've done in here is they've unwrapped every standard for ELA and Mathematics, and they provide all of the information in one spot, specifically some things about how to teach a standard, what are the, what we would call the, now I've lost the word, and Cory and I were just talking about it. It doesn't matter. I'll say it as under wrap, but that's not what I mean. Task analysis. So what are the things that students need to master in order to master that standard, the basic skills? And then how to address common misconceptions? So if you're not an expert in that particular standard, it gives you some resource in that regard. The other thing that's important for us is it provides us some consistency across all of our grade levels in understanding what is being asked by the standards. It provides the pacing and the level of rigor for our implementation. It provides a platform that's navigable. And a key for us is that it provides this model and location for future libraries for our advanced classes in high school courses, as well as for more robust curriculum units aligned with the pacing guides that are already there. So this is housed in Galileo. It's currently accessible to every teacher. And to make this very clear, because I don't think it has been, our current expectations for K-8 is that our teachers are using the pacing calendars and the standards information that are available for English Language Arts and Mathematics in order for their planning, instructional planning. That there may be some curriculum pieces that are tied to that. We don't have an expectation that they're using those curriculum pieces. They are available. The second expectation for this year is that they'll be using the pre-mid and post-assessment that is there for those grade level standards, so they can identify what knowledge students have when they come in. They aren't reteaching things that are not necessary to be re-taught. They can find areas of weakness. Midway, what is the progress? And then the final assessment to see what the students have learned. There are DCS formative assessments. Our request for our staff is you can use those or you can develop your own, but that we should be doing formative assessments throughout the year since we're no longer doing benchmarks. And that they use their data and that standards calendar for horizontal and vertical planning. So that's what we're asking our staff to do with this Crane platform. Any questions on that so far?
I have one. One of the things that kind of struck me in the discussion of the English Language Arts textbook for the high school was that this was going to be a resource for an English Language Arts teacher at the high school, kind of mapping your plan. And here I see in the K-8 year that we had the map, the year and plan, is there a thought process of adding something outside of the textbook? Something, some of what we're seeing here in Crane, that would go into the high school?
One of the areas that we've talked about at the high school level, and we're probably prepared to talk about that today, we are actually utilizing the Galileo platform, which is ATI, and the ladies will show you how to get into that. Galileo provides standards-aligned assessments for all grade levels, K through 12. And so right now, what we're doing at the high school, and we haven't required that they do so, but the high school staff in Language Arts and Math have decided that they will be using the pre-mid and post-assessments as well, so they can identify how students are doing in terms of their standards when they come in mid-year and then at the end of the year. Currently, the structure at the high school, and I can speak for Language Arts, I can't speak for Mathematics, has been, we have a unit of instruction that we have, a story or a novel that we've decided that we're going to teach. And now we say, okay, which standards are we covering when we teach this? And what we're looking for and to move to is an idea that these are the standards that we're going to teach throughout the year, and now what are the materials that best meet these standards? It's a little bit different way of approaching it. So ideally, yes, we would like to get to that point and identify those resources that would be aligned, and then just line them up in the curriculum. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. I'm sorry I caught you off guard with it because I didn't know that that was in the planning stage, but so this then, not to make too much logical with here, that this then may supplant the thought process on the textbook? Or is that something...
It may or it may not. But I think what it would, the idea that you identify the standards you have to teach, and then you find the text that aligns to that, is the approach for a textbook adoption. The other thing to understand for the board, and you'll remember the conversation particularly with the board member Ward, who was concerned that we were going to buy this and keep renewing it. The intent was to purchase this as a three-year subscription. And what that means is that we would get the Crane updates. So as their experts are updating, because they piloted for years before this, and we've been updating. And then we still own everything that we have at the beginning of three years. So nothing goes away. We have that pacing guide. We just don't get their updates any longer. And so then our plan would be then, as we continue to utilize the pacing guide and identify how our students are performing, because right now, they're actually being asked to do things at earlier in the year and at earlier grade levels because of the way the standards are aligned. Once we kind of catch up to that level of expectation, then we can do our own revisions, and we can build our library of support materials to go with each of those standards in the pacing guide. And we own the platform already, as far as the Galileo, we purchased that as well. So it's an ongoing commitment, and ideally, ultimately, everything will be housed in that one platform for all teachers to access.
Do you have any idea how many people work on that updating of the Crane? I mean, I know that they do this in the school district.
They actually have a full-time math expert and a full-time Language Arts expert who work on that. And that was part of our reasoning, that the math person was actually a part of the development of the mathematics standards, and so has pretty intimate knowledge of the standards. And so because they have that time, they can...
They can do that.
And the other thing that I'll share, you will see, this is not perfect. We purchased early on, while it was still in a, what would you call it, a beta stage, so it's not perfect. You'll see, and anybody in the room can tell you, that the math is better than the Language Arts, and that there are some things that are really annoying, as there are in most programs. But the actual pacing and the wrapping of the standards, that's the piece that is so time-consuming that you can get in one spot. And so we're going to start with Christina, and Christina's going to show you basically how we get into it and walk us through first grade Language Arts, one standard. And then Lindsay will come over and talk about seventh grade math, so you can just see the comparisons from primary to upper grade, and then also from Language Arts to Math.
Good evening. So as Diana expressed, the ELA is definitely not at the same rigor or the same quality at this point as the Math, but we're working through it. So I'm going to show you as a first grade teacher how the ELA looks. So when we log in, all of us have this dashboard. We go down, you can go here to the screen button, or right up here to curriculum, digital curriculum platform, click on the builder. From that point, I get to select my library of what area I am working on. So you'll see it goes from science. There is Engage New York in there for both Mathematics and ELA, and the reason is they are partners with Galileo, so it's not necessarily that we have to use those, that they're resources to us. But we're going to go all the way down to ELA. So in the ELA, there is many different documents that you can look at. You can get a glimpse of the ELA updates. So if we had been using this exact planner last year, if we just wanted to look at the updates as a quick overview, we would click on this document, and it'll show us everything that they updated on the standards. I'm going to take you down to the quarter two curriculum planner. So if I was going to start planning for quarter two, I would view. It will bring up, and Diana does have a copy for each of the board members of this.
It's minute.
So this is a document that we have access to, that we can go through and look at. It will give you what quarter...
I have a 95 glass on my desk.
And yes, the print option, this is a great way to show the board that the print options are a struggle for all of us right now. Unless we zoom in, the print that you have in front of you is what many teachers do have in their plan books because the printing options are, they're not perfect at the moment. So when we go through this, it does tell you by week what, in each area of ELA, what we're working on. So for first grade, we have phonics, reading foundations, reading literature and informational texts, our language standards. And then on the second document, it also has our writing standards. On the document that you have specifically, I, over the summer, a group of us got together K-3 teachers, and what we did is we went through for LHUSD specifically. We changed the dates so that they would match up to our dates for our calendar for the entire year. We changed, last year, the district spent some money for all of the K-3 teachers to go through the Discovery Phonics training. So when we looked at the pacing that Crane offered, we were a little bit in panic because we wouldn't be able to teach that program how we had just had the training. So we went through and aligned Discovery to this, so we took out the Crane phonics and put in ours. Another piece that you'll see on our specific map is, we left in their language because the language has the specific standards that we need to teach as first grade teachers, but we had input in LHUSD grammar, the verb tense study, which is that painless grammar that was, we had training on for a few years. So that is an addition to our LHUSD maps that you will find on the K-3 maps. We did not do it for four through six because that was, we had not gotten that far. But that's just additions that you'll see on the map in front of you versus what's in the program there.
And if I can interrupt, so this is an example of the idea of making these maps our own to align with what we're doing. And this is a lot quicker to do than to develop it from scratch for every single grade level.
Sure.
So on the map for quarter two for ELA, these are all the standards that we are required to teach as first grade teachers. If you look down here up the drop-down. So if I'm looking for a standard that I'm going to teach, if I'm going to teach this RL-06, I would click on it. I would then have... I would then have, I don't know if I can send you. Okay. Over here, it will give me my anchor standard in layman terms, so not specifically what is in the state standards, but it'll show me the, it'll show me the actual standard from the state standards. It'll then show me the progression. So with this standard, it's going to tell me what kindergarten was expected to do, what first grade is expected to do on top of that kindergarten standard, and then what second grade will have to do. So as a first grade teacher, I can look at, this is my goal, is to identify who is telling the story at various points in the text. But it also gives me that view forward to look at, the second grade standard is that they're going to have to look at point of view of characters, including by speaking in a different voice for each character when reading aloud. So I just know what they're going towards. In addition to that, it has some, the math is much more developed, so overarching ideas you will find in some of the ELA, but not all of them. The vocabulary, it will show the vocabulary that we're using. You'll notice that in some of theirs, they do have the Spanish, because they have bilingual schools, I'm guessing, so you're going to see them on our maps. It'll have the essential questions. Sometimes it'll have ELA standards that are linking. This one does not happen to have that. Here, you'll notice in Crane, they use the hardcore reading series, so they have adopted a text. So a lot of what is in here, if they give us notes or strategies, it does align to a specific text, so that doesn't apply, it's not applicable to us, because we don't own that program. But over here, it'll have some performance tasks that you can read through to see if we had this story, which again, this is aligned to that hard core, so it's a little bit sometimes difficult for us to use this piece, but it will give us a performance standard or an idea of how to make one. It will give us links to different places, so you could link onto this Illinois informational. If I click on here, it will give me a few lessons that I can look at as a template to see if something that I wanted to do. When I go up here to the standards, and this is where math is, if I was to do this in math, it will tell me all the standards are not here. For the materials, this is the test that my students would be required, the formative assessment, which is truly a summative, because we do give this after instruction, but they do call them formative as far as Galileo. But this is the assessment on the standard. It's between five to 10 questions, but I would read these questions to my students to see if they've mastered the standard and if I can move on, or if I need to reteach this standard. So, and that, we do paper pencil in first grade. Starting in grade two and up, they do it online. So it's a little bit different. So it's a lot of testing on every standard to make sure that they're meeting those. But those are common assessments that are available to us across the district. Are there any questions on any of that part so far? Go ahead.
Do you, is this where the the academic vocabulary would be housed?
It is on, there's academic vocabulary right there.
So it's broken out, like by standard, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So there's not one spot where the vocabulary is?
No. So every single standard would be different. If I clicked on this one, the words would be different here. Any other questions on the first grade? So just keep in mind that for our district, we did have to go through and make updates based on the programs that we are being asked to use. Expectation is that we use grammar if we've been trained, and we use that phonics if we've been trained, so we did have to update our maps. We do not have a cohesive curriculum, so we are, this is driving our instruction, but we teach based on standards. So the texts that I use in my classroom may be different than the school down the street, but the idea is that we're both teaching that standard. But at this time, we do not have that assess, or that curriculum that is going to follow this pacing guide. So we are jumping around as much as we need to. One nice feature of this, you can see for first grade, is we have a special folder. Let me find it real quick, sorry. So here, you'll see that there is the ELA review library. Every first grade teacher has access to this. And I can go in as I'm teaching a text, so this week I'm teaching Mal Soup. I have created folders in here, and any teacher throughout the district can go in, they can look at what materials I have chosen to use, they can add their own materials to here. So we are sharing materials, and we're not using up that space on the shared drive, which is what we used to do. So this is just one thing that we're doing, it's a trial right now, so it's just a review library. Our lessons aren't necessarily perfect at this time, but when we meet monthly, these are things that we discuss. But it's one way that we can communicate from school to school on a weekly basis.
So are we getting the the resources from the links that were already built into Crane? Or are we just pulling resources from whatever's been the history of where we're pulling them from, whether it's online or?
These, so these specific ones are teacher-created, so not a single thing was, it's not a teacher's pay teacher, it is a muscle man manpower at the moment, as far as this.
So the resources that you're using to create this were just books that we have already in the district?
Things, or things that I've purchased. So when we did adopt the new standards, the Arizona State Standards, at the, when it originated, we had a trade book list. And so there was like a by grade level, it would say, these are the trade books that your grade level may choose to read, or the trade books are anchor books, or is it name? I don't know specifically, anchor, I'm getting the head nods. But I kind of went off that list when we started this, and we tried to pull as many titles of those as we possibly could, so that our kids were getting that literature that was on that list. So, and then we created units based on that. There, within those units, and if you want to sit down at one point, I can go through, I don't want to bore the audience, but I would love to share with you what we do. But we have incorporated thinking maps and QAR, the things that our district had adopted for us to start, like different strategies to use. So we have built those into our resources. So they're teacher-created, they're definitely not perfect, but we're looking at it.
Nothing's perfect.
And so in in the English Language Arts, if it's specific to the hardcore adoption for Crane, then we can't access that, because we don't own it. But there are, in some lessons, there are other, like she had that one point where there were lesson plans on there, that you could access that and get those sample lesson plans for that standard. It was the Illinois, whatever that link was. So we do have access to those links. The only thing that we don't have access to is a curriculum that they purchased that we don't own. I know in the mathematics, while they don't use Engage New York, they will identify occasionally a lesson out of the Engage New York that matches really well to that particular standard, and that would be listed in the resource, for example.
So because it's all spelled out what you're looking for, even if you don't have access to the text, but it, I can't remember the word that was used, but it, the performance tasks, you could kind of look at that performance task and then use that on any text maybe that you were, so would we be able to use the the textbooks, so to speak, that we have to build off of those, just because we have so many, and be able to do that standard by standard? Would that be?
We could, and I know that, we were actually having this discussion with elementary principles today, so I'll let them pipe in if they want to. But our curriculum is pretty old, and from what I understand, and I can't speak to this personally, because I haven't been through it and tried to teach it, but the stories that are available primarily at the K one, two, and maybe three are, you could still use those stories, but the background, you would have to create the lessons to go with those stories. My understanding is that at the intermediate, four, five, and six, that they aren't as strong as far as the the level of the reading for those stories, and so that they have to provide some additional resources at that level. But yes, we can use, and the same thing is true for our math books. We have our math expressions. There are, not every standard in the new standards might be in that text, but the problems and the instruction on how to do certain skills in mathematics are there, that teachers would have to supplement if they weren't exactly aligned anymore.
This one up here on the screen is, I mean, it is an example of a lesson that a teacher could go to. They have examples, they will give you the learning objectives, the guiding questions, it'll give you a sequence of what you could do, but again, we may not necessarily have this text. You might, you might need to adapt it for what you have in your room.
Now we're going to take a walk on the math side. I teach seventh grade math, so I'll come out of her library. My my setup looks just the same. I just accessed the math grade seven library. One of the things that we've struggled with at our site is just our new teachers, helping to support them, are they teaching to correct rigor? And do they know the background knowledge that these students have? Are they tapping into that? This has been huge for us in starting to bridge those gaps, especially with our newer staff. So my setup looks pretty much the same as what you saw in ELA. I'll open it up, and I'll just see our assessment list, and then down below, the calendar. I think the math calendars have been a little bit more friendly in terms of the print. This is broken out by weeks, and within each week, I can see, here's the standards I'm going to cover. It tells me A Z Merit, 23 to 27 percent of my tests will be expressions and equations, so I know right away how to weight this standard. It has notes for me when teaching, and then it also tells me when to use the assessments that are provided. One of the things that my math team has worked really hard on is to make sure that we are accessing the sixth grade standards, kind of as our anticipatory set, to really get their minds going, oh yeah, I can do this, math can be really scary for our students. So we start by going to the standards progression. And it will take us back a couple of grades, and we can see where they're going to access our current standard. And it also has helped us, because our eighth grade teachers, we meet usually as a seven, eight team, they're able to tell us, here's the part of this standard that we need you to beef up, because we're struggling to get them to the correct level on this standard that we'll follow. So we start with the grade level progression. For our newer staff who have not experienced the wonders of middle school, we take them to the common misconceptions, and we let them know, you, we'll see they should have already mastered fractions, starting back in fifth grade, but guess what? They still struggle in seventh grade with fractions. And then they know that you cannot dive right into a really challenging fractions lesson with positive and negative fractions. They know they have to go back and review those skills. We've also been working really hard to start with our pre-test data, and if we see that a standard is already like at mastery with our students, we we will teach it, introduce it, review it, and then move on from it. So our pacing sometimes fluctuates from what Crane recommends, because we are always looking at the data. If they've already mastered the ratios and proportions standard one, we're not going to spend two weeks on it, even if that's what Crane says. The other thing that we look at, and this is something that is on the State Department of Ed website, but it's buried behind about 30 clicks of the mouse to try to get to it, and it moves constantly. I found it over the summer, and then they moved it. So it's nice, that's just right here for us. It's the blueprint, again, with the weighting, but then it's also the item specification. So for this particular standard, it gives me content limits. So when we're teaching them positive and negative fractions, it tells me, limit your fractions to halves, fourths, and eighths. That's huge for our students, to not have to deal with one ninth, and some of those other repeating decimals that can be really challenging. Limit your decimals to the hundredth place. This was not something that we had access to prior, even though it was on the State Department of Ed, it was never like advertised that it was out there, and we were just in awe when we got this. It's made our planning a lot different. The other thing that it has is it tells us, because we are online testing, how the kids are going to see the item. So here, the kids will have to create a table, let me zoom in. They'll have to write an equation, they'll have to graph something, they might get multiple choice or multiple select. So we're getting a lot of information about how far to take the standard, but also how to show the kids how to test. And we are now doing all of our unit testing in the computer lab and coaching them through what that looks like, because it's way different than paper and pencil for them. During the lesson, when we begin instruction, we access the instructional strategies. We have links in here that take you to the flipbook. It again tells us in grade six, here's what you're going to build on, and then it actually has resources. I just took this screenshot of it right out of Crane and put it into my lesson plan, and this is how my students began to multiply and divide positive and negative numbers. So we're just putting these exact strategies, along with the questions, into our daily With the instructional strategies, we are also provided essential questions, stamps, and prompts through a few different links, and then we can incorporate this as we teach the students to gauge, are they understanding it to the correct depth of knowledge? Is there any questions so far?
Lindsay, I have a question.
Yes.
When you were first showing the progression, you had the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and there were words that were in red on the one that you showed us.
Oh, yes. By grade. Yep.
Thanks. Yeah, so my my question is, are those highlighted because they're academic vocabulary, or are they just highlighting what it is, all the different functions that have to have?
Those are all the different functions of that specific standard. So we see that in grade six, it's adding, subtracting, multiplying, and dividing, all four operations with multi-digit decimals limited to the hundredth place. And then if we go up into grade five, we can see, use equivalent fractions as a strategy to add and subtract, add and subtract. So it's just distinguishing that now we're adding on, multiply, and divide. And then, in grade seven, that helps us to connect, that they do know how to add, subtract, multiply, and divide, that they're going to extend that to all the rational numbers, including the positive and negative ones. Opposite quantities combined to make zero, so really focusing on.
So I liked it when there was a change.
Right, yeah. So it kind of shows you, here's how it's going deeper, here's how it's going deeper. Our terminology is also available in here for our lesson planning, mathematical terminology for these two standards. These are the words that we are expected to introduce, and that our students are able to explain and provide examples of. Our assessments are also located in the assessments tab up here. I can show you what that looks like for our students. So if I were to take them to the computer lab, they would see this exact screen. They would be typing their response in the text box, which is, for our seventh and eighth graders, a skill that they're learning still, so that's really good practice for them. You'll see multiple choice, and you can jump around and find, just this one you have to type in. This one is a challenge to get them to not put any extra spaces, or maybe a comma instead of the decimal point, but it's really preparing them for what the A Z Merit test will look like.
So a question on that, because this would be an example, I think, that, so if they do make a mistake, even if they have the answer right, it's wrong, but then when you get the assess, you never get that information back, that they really had it right, but it was marked wrong?
On A Z Merit or on Galileo?
Either.
On A Z Merit, no. I don't ever get that information back. On Galileo, I can view every response in real time in the computer lab. So if a student, for example, were working on equations, if a student types N equals, they've not followed the directions, it says use only digits. I can call them back to my computer, coach them, and say, I need you to take out the equal sign and the N, and you're going to put just those digits. So we're using it as a coaching opportunity, so that hopefully by A Z Merit, when I don't get those sort of specific feedback items, the kids are interpreting the directions.
Sorry. That's terrible.
I would, I would like to say, this outstanding resource, which I have not seen this shown publicly, or I had myself, this could make a retired teacher want to go back into the classroom. You understand? This is just a tremendous asset to our district, for teachers to be able to plan their lessons and keep track. I'm sure that there are many things wrong with it, but I give you two a lot of credit for taking the lead on this kind of thing.
And there are a lot of people using it, they're experimenting with it. They're experimenting with it, helping us find the problems with it.
It's a process, I'm sure.
So if I may, you'll notice that the tabs going across in the reading, those tabs aren't all populated. So they tend to have everything under the first tab, whereas here in the math, there typically is not something.
Except for that one.
Except for that one. So here, for example, like when you went on English, it said there are no standards. It wasn't that there are no standards, they just aren't showing them under the standards tab. So this was designed more for the math. So those are just little things that we're noticing that are, you know.
Now, is that something that we could manually plug in?
We could, sure.
And for the advanced curriculum, I teach advanced algebra and my partner teaches advanced 8th grade math, which is our Algebra 1, 2 section for 8th graders. We are trying to put our own, basically what you're seeing here, but for LHUSD into the Crane platform or API. It's not an easy process. I feel like it does take a lot of time. And we don't have a map right now, but we are developing it. So in time, it can move up and be passed to, you know, the high school. Or we can work with the high school and say, okay, here's what our Algebra 1, 2 kids are doing. What are we missing? What feedback do you have for us? What is your data telling us? Because they are now using the pre, mid, post testing. So they're going to have feedback for us and we're all talking about the same thing now. In the past, it was like, well, we did Galileo, but we couldn't pass it on because they didn't have that same testing system that we have.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Would you please give a hand for... It's much easier to see than just be telling you what it does, what actually it looks like as a tool, what are the ins and outs of it. And so then going back to when we talked about using the pacing calendar and that standards information and then the pre, mid, and post, that's what we want our folks to be using.
So theoretically, we could get to a point years down the road where we've identified the best of the best, resources, you know, strategies. And the only thing that would change would be the standards maybe. And this could be a K-12 in our district.
Absolutely.
Just designed for our district.
Yes. And again, you see the beginning process with the K-3 being modified. And Christina shared that folder, they've got some samples in, so we can create libraries. Not that we've all figured out how to do that. I certainly couldn't. I can say we without we and...
The mouse in your bucket.
Yes, exactly. What they've created for the 8th grade algebra is not exactly what Crane looks like. I think it's better, but we wouldn't have gotten there without having this to start from.
Gotcha.
Is that accurate?
Of course.
Can I ask a question? Are we using this data to find the gaps within our grade level?
Yes. And that's part of the reason why we want everybody to follow the pacing guide, because we want to see where is it that we aren't matching up and get everybody on the same page. You can't really improve until you know where you are. And when not everybody's doing, at least teaching the same standards, you don't have a sense of whether, is this school performing less well in 5th grade math because of the instruction or because of the curriculum or because of, you know, whatever those reasons could be. But if everybody's teaching the same standard and working together to plan lessons, they can begin to explore and see what's working, what isn't, and increase student achievement. So yes.
Can I just say too that I don't want, I mean, there's no way to even measure the amount of work that put in, was put in to get to where, what you saw there. And I mean, especially because we kind of piloted everything last year and it was hours and hours and hours. So worth it, yes. But, you know, kudos to the teachers because they really... And that's now, it just takes work, you know. Worth it, but it does take time and work. So I sure appreciate all the time that went into it for my staff last year as we kind of go in and tried it, so.
Thank you. Everybody worked on it.
Okay. Last, and the recognition of visitors, but certainly not least, it's the Lake Campus Education Association. Mrs. Nordgasky?
Christina. President. President Maston. Board. Superintendent Assayer. Directors. Staff. Parents. Students. So just to give you our monthly report, as you know, as of two weeks from today, we will have a lot of information coming out of our polls. And so our focus is still on focusing on public education, making sure our vote is on candidates, and propositions that will support funding for public education. So with that said, I have some clarifying information I want to share with Prop 305. So again, the following is for information only. I'm here to simply clarify points that have been stated publicly. Some say that SB 1431 has a language that states there is accountability for the ESA, also known as vouchers, the ESA holder. Some are stating a no will relinquish the cap. Both of these statements are inaccurate. Currently, there is a cap. A no vote will continue the cap. There is also no language added to the SB 1431 that adds accountability to the ESA receiver. Continuing to clarify, passing of Prop 305 will actually enact SB 1431, which expands and actually eliminates the cap of the number of students in a three-year period. And that three-year period began last year. If this, it has been stated that there are only five students in Legislative District 5, our district, under the current cap and law, receiving personal funding through ESAs. If it passes, it will open it up for more locally to be able to receive ESAs, but more importantly, more statewide will be able to receive them. Currently, the state of Arizona is struggling to fully fund public education. So whether LD5 has five or 500 students utilizing ESAs, funding for all of Arizona public education comes from the same pot, the general fund. If Prop 305 passes, constituents will be allowing an uncapped member of students in the state of Arizona to pull from the only state funding source for Arizona public schools. To clarify in regards to accountability, some are stating the SB 1431 says there's accountability. The only accountability that has been added to the bill is that the ESA recipient, the student, has to take a standardized test. They have to take it, not pass it. Yet there is still no language regarding proof that the recipient is using ESA vouchers to fund a child's education. In the beginning, ESAs were practical and purposeful. But SB 1431, Prop 305, is not practical and not purposeful for Arizona or our public education system. So again, please be an educated voter and vote in the next two weeks, whether it's early voting, whether it's a mail-in ballot, or at the polls next week. Locally, we are focusing on National Education Week, which will be in November, from November 12th through the 16th, which includes a parent day, ESP, focusing on our ESPs, an educator for the day, and our subs. So we're planning that locally. Thank you.
Item 4.1 is approval of our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve our consent agenda.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Beth Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. We have no old business under item 5, so we'll move right into item 6.1, which is discussion of possible action on the Arizona School Board Association bylaw proposal. Superintendent Assayer?
Thank you. Yes. President Maston, members of the board. We recommend that the board discuss and consider and give direction on voting on several, actually two bylaw changes and proposals from the Arizona School Boards Association. These proposals have been offered by the ASBA Board of Directors and the Governance Committee. After discussion, the board will vote to give direction to the superintendent to vote in the manner the board has approved. The following are the bylaw proposals to be considered. Proposal A adds an additional statement to the core belief statement for ASBA, and it covers the area of equity. Proposal B recommends that the bylaw be amended so that a bylaw can be amended or repealed by a majority affirmative vote of all board members. The board did receive some backup information via email, and the actual text of those changes are represented in that backup documentation.
I will entertain a motion on 6.1.
I make a motion that we vote now on both proposal A and B.
I'll second that. We're going to floor. Discussion?
I have a question on this one, this on proposal A, where they say every school board has the responsibility to champion and pursue educational equity for every student by challenging systemic inequities. What are they talking about? I mean, there's a lot of nice words in there, but I'd like to know what those inequities are.
I didn't see anything that pointed out what the inequities might be.
I think we get into a lot of language in some of this and it's not something I necessarily fan of. I think that there are absolute differences when you use the word equity versus the word equal, especially if you start talking about opportunity and outcome. Without that further...
I think they're specifically talking about outcome. And I don't know that you can make outcomes equal. I just don't know that that's possible.
So that's what you think they're saying, right?
Well, they're not very specific, again. Like John's, that's the big word now is equity. But I think that there's representation from every single school board, well, maybe with the exception of one school district in the state that is a member. And so there's your equity. You have your representation from your local school board. I don't know how much more equity we can provide.
Well, I just, I mean, anytime you put the words down, I think it should be a clear meaning, easily understood, so that there's no confusion. But when you sit and look at this challenging systemic inequities, what are those?
That's a good question.
So, I mean, that's the thing that caught my attention real quick. It's nice to have these going ideas, but if they're not understandable or if they're not spelled out, it's real difficult for me to vote in favor of something like that.
Any further discussion? Further discussion, Terry, let's go ahead and call it a vote.
Kathy Cox?
No.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item 6.2 is approval of qualified evaluators for the 2018-2019 school year. Do this first today.
Madam, sorry. Mr. President and Governing Board. Mr. President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the following administrators and certified staff as qualified evaluators for the 2018-2019 school year. The names are listed above. These individuals have received the necessary training as required by ARS 15537D and are delegated the authority to issue written preliminary notices of inadequacy of classroom performance.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on 6.2.
I make a motion to approve 6.2 as presented.
Second.
Discussion on 6.2?
See, this is very understandable to me.
Very clear.
Terry, we're ready.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item 6.3 is approval of performance-based goals for 2018-2019 year. Again, this is first today.
Mr. President and Governing Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the following performance-based site-based goals for 2018-19. LHUSD and its stakeholders have high expectations for our students, teachers, and administrators. Each year, each site sets goals to improve student learning. Goals include four components: student achievement, professional development, parent communication, and involvement. Principals will share how these goals fit in with the district target and missions. What is below is a breakdown of how each of the elementary sites and the secondary sites are achieving their goals and then the goals are, the plans are listed behind that material.
I'll entertain a motion on 6.4.
I make a motion, we approve 6.3.
I approve 6.3. My apologies.
As presented.
Okay. Discussion?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if all the principals are here. Okay. Just go through in order that they're here. And I'm just, and maybe it's, maybe you don't have this up yet and that's fine if you don't. So under star line, 3rd grade, I'm curious when it refers to, because I haven't seen this type of curriculum, when it refers to real-world problems, what would be an example of maybe a real-world problem for math in 3rd grade? Is this talking about, you know, trains with X number of apples in the back? Is that what we're talking about? Anybody?
Sure. Yes. So something they would hear and see in the real world.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and then let's see, under smoke tree, under, it says under kindergarten, identify shapes as two-dimensional, lying in a plane, flat, or three-dimensional solid. And then it talks about addressing skills based on the current level, 1st through 6th grade SDC. So is that the special means?
This is S D C K.
Oh, S D C K, okay. Because I got confused, it says 1 through 6. And then an informational paragraph, what would something like that, I'm just curious, what an informational paragraph would be in math too?
Is that under the S D C?
After reading an informational paragraph with minimal cues. And again, if you don't know...
This is both math and reading language mixed together.
Okay.
Yeah, those are both, those are mixed together.
Okay.
Smoke tree had both math and reading, or math and language arts.
Okay. And then I have the question on the educational vocabulary, but I saw some of it, but I'm hoping that, is there an actual list that then gets broken out into the different cranes? Is there like a specific, this is the 4th grade academic vocabulary? And if there is that list, and I know...
That's not in Crane. And I apologize again, somebody can help me out. There's a very distinct vocabulary program and training that our district has had over the past, in the past.
It was Marzano.
And so the level, the question came up about what levels of vocabulary. And Mr. Gardner was not here and is not here again to answer them. So I could not answer that question.
And I know that. But I'm just wondering if there is a specific list of academic vocabulary, K through 12, would that be something that I could get in that form just to...
Years, before we did the Marzano training, we were provided with a list of tier 1, 2, and 3 words, K-12. And then we, and I don't, you know, it's been a long time, but I know at Thunderbolt, excuse me, we sat down in department chairs, looked at, you know, divided them, which is tier 1, which department's going to be teaching which word. And then there are obviously... And then there are obviously the content-specific criteria that are in there as well. So, at one time, we did have, but it's, it's been a long time.
I think, thank you. If there was a list of words, then...
I'm sure we have it.
We certainly can refine that.
Yeah, I'm sure we have it.
Now, as far as having, I don't believe that they list the academic vocabulary separately anywhere, so it's by standard what is the academic vocabulary is about. And that tends to be the technical language of the standard academic vocabulary, which may or may not be different from those other lists.
Probably is not the same thing then, maybe.
It's your own set.
The academic vocabulary, like the few words that were just shown in the example for each standard?
A lot of those are content-specific.
Right.
So those, like if you're a civics teacher, then it might be democratic principles. It's content-specific, whereas, that's tier three. Tier-two words is academic vocabulary that is across content, so...
You could use it in math, social studies.
This is a really lame one, but like analyze. So it's things that we as teachers say all of the time, that we make assumptions sometimes that kids know, and they don't actually know. That was a really lame example, but, and then tier one is everyday words.
And I get the tiers, I understand that. I just wonder, where are these academic vocabulary words coming from? That was really...
In a list.
Okay. I'll ask Brad when he gets back.
Is there a 6.3 slide that we can follow along with the attachments that you're reviewing? Thank you.
The attachments are not out there.
Right, but I mean, you're having, you can see the language that you're reviewing.
Any further on 6.3?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item 6.4 is approval of administrator performance pay plan and criteria for 2018-19 school year. This is first debate, and this is aside.
Mr. President and Governing Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the attached Administrator Performance Pay Plan and Exhibit A Administrator Performance Pay Plan Criteria for the 1819 school year. On September 11, 2012, the Governing Board approved an alternative procedure to meet the requirements of SB 1263, ARS 15341. With the alternative procedure, principals, assistant principals, directors, and the superintendent will receive an equal portion of the designated sum if they meet all the requirements. The breakdown of the requirements will be as follows: 25% for academic gain, 25% for parent satisfaction, 25% for professional development, and 25% for teacher satisfaction. The alternative procedure was chosen by LHUSD and has previously been approved by legal.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on 6.4.
Make a motion we approve 6.4 as presented.
Second. Discussion on 6.4?
I have a question on the parents' survey. It used to be that each school made up its own parents' survey. Is that not true anymore?
We use a universal survey.
I'm assuming that the results of the survey will come to the board? Or is it viewed online, or...
No. We can provide the results of the survey to the board, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion on 6.4? Terry, I think we're ready.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item 6.5 is first presentation/review of revised policies. Your session is busy, I guess. Superintendent, aside.
Yes, thank you. President Maston, members of the board, it is our recommendation that you approve the first presentation of the policies listed below. As we did go through these a little bit more carefully in the work session, there is a correction on page 30. The adoption date was listed as 2019, and this is only 2018. And so that will be corrected in the final copy. I think that was the only correction that we found from going through from the work session. Primarily, these are technical changes that align our policy with changes in legislation.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on 6.5.
Make a motion we approve 6.5 as presented.
Second. Terry, I think we're ready to vote.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item 6.6 is Nautilus's turn at the approval for changes to the extracurricular/curricular enrichment activities for tax credit funds. Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the addition of the Nautilus Elementary Homework Club to the tax credit program at Nautilus Elementary. Mr. Berger, principal at Nautilus, is requesting the addition of the Nautilus Elementary Homework Club to the tax credit program. The purpose of this organization shall be to assist Nautilus students to struggle, who struggle to complete their homework at home. The Homework Club will strive to provide a positive atmosphere for learning and increase students' pride and performance in the scholastic areas. The program's sponsor will be Mr. Berger, and upon closure of the program, funds will be transferred to the tax credit auto-preference account.
I will entertain a motion on 6.6.
I make a motion we approve 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Discussion on 6.6?
Yeah, the last one, right?
What's this, the last one?
What took you so long?
Really? You mean there's other homework clubs?
I had to do that.
Thank you for doing that.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item 6.7 is discussion and possible action regarding the expansion of Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Oro Grande. Superintendent, aside.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Maston, members of the board. It is recommended that the Governing Board discuss and possibly approve the expansion of the Lake Havasu Classical Academy from a K-2 in the 1920 year to a K-6 program. For the 2018-19 school year, the Governing Board approved a pilot magnet program providing a classical education model at Oro Grande Elementary School. Pilot began with kindergarten and first grade with the intention to expand a grade level per year. With the success of the curriculum and instructional strategies, interest continues to grow from parents. These same parents have been pivotal at sharing the benefits of the classical curriculum with other parents, and would like the curriculum to be available to all grade levels, as many families have students in the grade levels that do not follow the classical approach. Students in the classical education have a structured spiraling curriculum, allowing students to work in content repeatedly through multiple grade levels. This approach has been successful at other classical schools, as other classical schools begin with grade levels of K through six. The Oro Grande principal and classical staff have been, have seen success in the benefits of the classical curriculum. The school-wide classical education would unify the staff and allow for a deeper and more successful collaborative approach. Recent training and classical school visits have provided a guiding compass that shows a K-6 program which serve all of the Oro Grande students, and would provide a desirable and attractive option for our community. The magnet has fulfilled a purpose in attracting students who would otherwise choose a private school. Approval of this item would allow the staff to begin a more intense research for curriculum training and hiring of staff. Prior to a final approval, a cost analysis and feasibility report will be provided to the board. We also had some questions, and so I do have some information supplemental to this. Mr. Maston, I don't know if you want to get a motion first?
Let's get it on the floor first, and you can connect. I'll entertain a motion on 6.7.
Make a motion we approve 6.7.
Second.
Thank you. At our work session, we discovered that we didn't have all of the same understanding of what a classical curriculum is and what the purpose of our classical magnet program is. And so I was asked to provide a simple explanation, and Mr. Rooney, you will be really surprised to know it took me about 10 slides to do that.
So I added to your workload?
Not at all. I just, as an English major, I can't do it in one slide. I'm just kidding. One of the things that I did want to share, though, is that there are some things that are important, and I thought, since not everybody knows about it, it would be a good chance to revisit this, since we talked about it basically last year, and it's our first year in working through it. And so what we have is what we call our, Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Oro Grande. And in a classical education, this is a model that is fairly commonly understood within certain realms, and it basically follows what they call the trivium, which is the hierarchy of grammar, logic, and rhetoric. And in a classical trivium curriculum, the grammar is considered the primary stage or the elementary stage, K through six. They are flexible, students don't, aren't stuck in grammar until sixth grade and suddenly move into the next level at seventh. But the idea here is that there's a lot of information. There's memorization, knowledge-based, facts, ideas, a lot of basic skills and principles, and they actually form a deep knowledge base, but then they begin organizing and analyzing these facts and ideas and principles to be able to put them together. Then the other component is virtue education, and a huge component of classical is a focus on virtues. The virtues that are typically identified are temperance, prudence, justice, and fortitude. And that's vocabulary that is a little above the grade level. Those translate to self-control, use of reason, regulation of relationships, and courage and emotional strength. And then the third component is that primarily the classical education takes a historical lens. So while it focuses on all of the things that students need to be learning, mostly it is approach from a historical lens and is intended to develop informed and wise citizens. In the curriculum, they do focus, it's Western base from the idea of, we're learning about the civics of the United States, but it is world and U.S. history. Completely covers all of that, it's not limited to that. What's interesting about these curriculums, and they're not all the same, because each school creates their own versions of that for their community, but what they do typically is, like in K through three, they might start with ancient and move up to modern, world and U.S., and then start again in fourth grade with the next level of depth in those areas. So students are getting information that's comprehensive to connect the concept of our world, and then getting deeper as they go up through the grade levels. So we have looked at, and for our pilot, we've looked at the Core Knowledge Foundation and the Hillsdale College Classical Curriculum. And so one of the things that is important to note is that both of these are actually very similar. The Hillsdale is based on the Core Knowledge work, but Core Knowledge only goes through K through eight. And so I'll share a little bit of some of the changes. But again, for Core Knowledge, it's a very explicit identification of what students learn at each grade level, and it's very much a building the knowledge as they go. And so everything that you learn is foundational to what you learn in the next year and so forth. They do cover the principles of government, fundamentals of science, world history, essential mathematics, diversity of language, and they do also prescribe music and art for students to learn, again, within a historical context. I mentioned about the kinnuhto that keeps building from year to year, and that as each student enters, they're learning based on previous knowledge, and they're becoming confident with what they know to take that deeper. And again, I mentioned the historical timeline. The also, it's very content-specific, and so it's not, you don't see a general, a general statement like, I don't know, something, we were looking at just the standards a few minutes ago, something like students will learn to identify the main character of text. So they have, it's very specific to a piece of work that they identify those things. So their skill is always within a context. And so there is, again, some information about the Core Knowledge. This is actually off the Core Knowledge website. There's a couple of key points in here. It's intended to be coherent and content-specific, and it's also, the second bullet or the second paragraph there talks about the effort with the Core Knowledge Foundation was that there's a specific set of shared knowledge that children should learn, particularly in the United States, and that when we listen to speakers, when we read, speakers and writers assume that their audience know these things because they've had this common knowledge, but many of our students don't have those references. So there'll be a reference in text, but the student doesn't have the background to understand the reference in text. And that's a key emphasis within the Core Knowledge. And then, again, it's very specific. It's not, it's not generic. There are certain things that every child learns, and it's coherent in that respect. So this is, yeah, that's big. What I wanted to show you, and again, this is not supposed to be able to read it in detail, but I noticed the board is looking back here. So this is Core Knowledge, it shows you preschool all the way up through eighth grade. That's what Core Knowledge covers. And then for each subject, it shows you what are the actual skills that they're going to learn each grade level. So if you look at this particular sequence, you can actually see that it builds across time, and see where they go for each of them. I just wanted to point out that there are visual arts and music that go across the grade levels in the Core Knowledge. And then if you look at, again, so here's grade one. For grade one, it gets much more specific in what is it that they would cover in those little lists that you saw on the teeny chart. And then when you get to, as an example, history and geography right here, it says history and geography. I don't think any of you can read it too well either, but it has a list here, world, something there, and modern.
Early world and modern.
Yeah.
So then when you get up here, though, then when you get to the detail of that on history and geography, it gives some background for the teacher, and then specifies exactly what geography it is. And then in early civilizations, so starts out with Mesopotamia, and specifically, then ancient Egypt. So it's very specific when you get to the actual detail of the curriculum. Okay? The difference there, this is the Hillsdale, and the reason I wanted to bring this forward for first grade, because we looked at both, is this is the same thing, history and geography. It's actually the, this is out of Core Knowledge, it's the exact same spatial sense. You get to Mesopotamia, the cradle of civilization. So they've taken, worked for, worth the Core Knowledge here, but what they've done is identified the text exactly that will be used to teach these things, and then what Hillsdale's done is taken this information and done a month-by-month sequence. So it's essentially the pacing guide as opposed to just the list. In Hillsdale, there are some differences, and this is the world geography. The phonics program they identify is different from the one that we use, and they also veer off of the Core Knowledge grammar, but all of their texts that they identify with history, geography, science, et cetera, are the Core Knowledge texts. Hillsdale philosophy, I just kind of threw this up there because they have this on their website, you can read what they talk about, but their philosophy is interesting because they talk about the fact that they want the students to be able to join the great conversation, to be able to interact with the greatest minds, characters, historical figures that a classical education can groom them for, which is grounded in language and literacy. The Founders Academy approach, and so this, when you look at the two of them, there are just some things that are provided more in-depth when we talk the Founders Academy piece, and some of these won't be surprising, but "content-rich coherent liberal arts curriculum delivered by kind-hearted subject matter experts." I'm not sure that's a, not a subjective word, but they do talk about the significant emphasis on phonics-based curriculum vocabulary, that it's teacher-centered and teacher-led classroom marked by Socratic responsive discussion. There's a lot of memory work. The testing does not guide the curriculum. One of the things that they do is they introduce Latin. So this is a, this is a spin-off that Core Knowledge does not have, but Latin is introduced in fourth and fifth grade, and actually starting to study it in sixth grade. Mathematics is taught conceptually, and then what you see here, Founders Academy will be a Core Knowledge school. So they've taken that. And then the other piece in their humanities courses and literature, primary source documents, letters, they rarely use textbooks. They use a lot of the originals for stuff, and they read the great books in the classes. So those are some things that make it a little bit unique. A question came up, and I wanted to address it, a question and comment about the teacher-driven or teacher-directed. John Hattie, I don't know if you're familiar with John Hattie, some of the people in the room might be, but Hattie has done a lot of research on meta-analysis of what... room might be, but Hattie has done a lot of research and meta-analysis of what is the effect of certain practices in relation to student achievement. And so this comes out of this book from John Hattie. It talks about that teachers have to be very clear on their goals, what he calls the learning intentions. What is it you want students to learn in any lesson? And they have to be very clear in the surface and the depth of conceptual learning and what the outcome is. And we talked about that through standards. The comment was about the teacher-driven. Teacher-driven does not mean that the teacher stands in front of the classroom all the time. What it means is that the teacher teaches the specific concepts. And one of the studies that they did, and they've got several that are in relation to some of the things that were mentioned here, is that once the, the students need to be explicitly taught those intentions and what the success criteria is, but the mind develops and responds to challenge. And so that piece, they talk about teacher-led classroom marked by Socratic responsive discussion, is that idea that that conversation around real content is huge in cognitive development and very important. It's not intended to be, it's the teacher only. And in fact, the effect size of that kind of dialogue in the classroom, student involvement, has an effect size of a point six, which is actually considered very high. So. And so Socratic seminar, if you're interested in knowing what that is, it is a formal discussion based on text. That's what they were referring to in that particular comment. And then again, the Hillsdale materials. The Hillsdale is a college that has an initiative called the Barney Charter Initiative. So their charter schools are called Barney Charter Schools. They are all public schools. They are not in private or Christian schools. And they've identified, based on the Core Knowledge, but where they've expanded it is in those areas that Core Knowledge doesn't address, and they do share that here. They have the scope and sequence for high school and they also have a scope and sequence for Latin. And then the other area is they've identified their own phonics program and they've identified their own grammar and math. So their grammar is well-learned language and the math is same format. They identify materials, I'm going to skip that one. And then this last slide I wanted to show you, this is an example of Break Hearts, which is one of our charter schools in Phoenix. And so essentially you can see where they've taken it and done their own, they've identified for English, they're going to use level readers, they're going to use general knowledge, literature, and then junior grade books for their English part of it. They don't identify in this particular one their phonics program, but they're probably not using the R B because it's out of print. And for history, they've identified the Core Knowledge here, the Singapore math, the Core Knowledge science, but they've added a different foreign language. And then they have music, but not art and PE. So again, the idea is that you take a classical curriculum, you identify what needs your community needs, and then you build that from there. So what we want to explore is expanding it to the sixth grade. What would, what would our program look like? What would we need to purchase? What would we need to do to get that going and then bring that recommendation back fully to the board so that you can make an informed decision based on the budget?
We'll start with audience discussion. If you are going to comment on this, we would ask that you would come forward and use the microphone so that everybody can hear you. So if we have any discussion from the audience at this point, we would entertain it now.
Can you please state your name?
Mr. President, school board members, and Superintendent Aspire. My name is Rebecca Kent, and I have the pleasure of teaching classical first grade at Ora Grande. I'm a graduate of Lake Havasu High School and an active member in the community. Over the course of this year, I am reminded why I follow up with education. The introduction of the Classical Magnet Program through Core Knowledge curriculum has given me the opportunity to see young minds expanded and passionately united in my students. Since starting the journey using Core Knowledge curriculum, I've seen my six-year-old students routinely identify Japan, Italy, and UK on the map. I foster conversations where my students identify similarities and differences between ancient Mesopotamia and Egypt. The inner workings of the body system have been discussed at great lengths, where it had to field some interestingly curious questions. I have applauded as my students perform plays of Aesop's Spaples and listen intently as they discuss personification of major characters. I have been inspired as my students learn and replicate the virtues in everyday life. The opportunity to use this rich curriculum has changed my professional career. As an educator and member of the community, I could not be more excited for this expansion of the program and the opportunity to share this treasure with the rest of my school and community is a delight. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Look down the bottom.
Use your teacher voice.
Whatever. I can be loud. That's not a problem.
My name is Kelly Gary, and I have two children at the Ora Grande School. I have one child in first grade at the Classical Academy, and I have another in fourth grade. So I have a unique perspective of having one child that already gone through first grade at Ora Grande and one child currently in first grade. I was skeptical when first presented with the opportunity to enroll in the Classical Academy. I knew absolutely nothing about classical curriculum or the academy. Fortunately, we had a great principal, Principal Vitterman, and other staff who were willing to sit down with us and explain to myself and other concerned parents exactly what it is, show us what curriculum looks like, kind of walk us through to get us to a level where we're comfortable in sending our kids, enrolling our kids into this program. Taking a risk with your child's education is not something that's easy to do. Education is extremely important to me as well as my husband, and I'm so glad that we did it. I could not be more pleased with the outcome and what I've seen in just a short period of time. I can't say that it's better or worse. Ashlyn, my oldest, had an incredible education in first grade, she had incredible teachers, loved Ora Grande, but I can definitely see a difference in the knowledge that my youngest has in first grade. It is a deeper level of education. You've heard that true knowledge is being able to take the information and apply it and not just memorize it for the purposes of test-taking. And when your sixth grader comes home, or your six-year-old comes home and starts talking about what they've learned in school and you have a conversation about vaccinations, and not just that vaccinations are good or hey, you know, X, Y, Z about vaccinations, talking about the origin of a vaccination and then applying that to, I don't like to go to the doctor to get shots, but I understand why vaccinations are important, and talking about this whole chronological history of vaccinations up until today. That's an incredible discussion to have with a six-year-old. And they're little sponges and they are absorbing this information that's being given to them. And this opportunity is so great. And so the opportunity to expand it to the entire school, K through sixth grade, is amazing. I know that my fourth grader is very excited. She wants to participate in what her younger sister is participating in. When she asks, hey mom, how do you spell poem? And my first grader says P-O-E-M. I mean, without, without any hesitation. I mean, she's being taught the beauty and love of words and of literature and of art. She's excited to read in class from the books. I know she would love school no matter what the curriculum is, but this is so much more enriching. It's so global. It's so much deeper than what I've seen personally before. Not that it's, it's bad or good, it's very different. I feel that when she, as she progresses, it truly is preparing her for higher education. Not just to pass a test and not just to pick a right answer, but to actually have true knowledge and wisdom of subjects and apply them to real world. That's missing today. I work with high school students. I bring them in and try to teach them about government and we're missing that. This is, this is an extremely wonderful opportunity that we can provide our district, our families, our students, and I just strongly encourage you to continue on this path. And let's open it up for all grades and see where it goes.
Thank you.
When she heard that I was coming to this meeting to talk about the Magnet School, this is very real to her and very important, and she was going to miss the first game of the World Series with dad to come. And we went over and over and over again, this is a boring meeting for a six-year-old. No offense, but let's be honest. But she had some things she'd like to say. I don't think she'd like to say them to the microphone. She would like me to say them. She'd like you to know that her favorite subject was studying about ancient Egypt. And one of the experiences we had as a family was we happened to watch the Brendan Fraser nineteen-whatever movie, The Mummy. And she pointed out to us all the things that were right and all the things that were wrong because she understood ancient Egypt. She can understand it in the pop culture form, format, but also she could teach us as a family thinks about it. Like Ms. Gary before me, before us, I too have children that have experienced all the way through. I have one at Thunderbolt right now and I have three others at Ora Grande. And Julia likes to teach some things that they don't know. For example, she was studying about religion. She studied Christianity. What else? Judaism and Islam. And at dinner, she wanted us to know something very important. She said, you want to say it?
No.
She said, you guys, this is really important. Do you know that Jesus Christ was Jewish? This was something that was valuable to her. It applied in her life and it was something she could share with the family. And it had to do with studying three different religions in the classroom. And I could go on and on with some really great stories, really good ones, huh? But the best part is that what she's learning at school is now becoming home-centered. We're talking about things in the home. She's bringing up things that she's recognizing from her classroom and can apply them in our home-based studies. And I think that's something that's very relevant and important in this school district is we want there to be a home connection. We want families to be involved, we want parents to be involved. And that this is happening because of the curriculum, because of the teachers, because of this desire to learn more. She comes home wanting to study more. She asked Google Mini if it would play Bach for her. My six-year-old asked Google Mini for Bach. So I could go on and on, like I said, with these stories, but most important, I want to share that I've seen positive education in this school district for years and all kinds of different formulas, but like was said before me, this is something different. And different can be a little bit scary and change can be unusual, but I can share my witness, my example, that this is worth it. It's worth it for our school district to really look at this for the entire school, and Ora Grande is the place to do it. We've already started there, but this team is working hard to prepare for this transition, and I think it could be a great success from my understanding as a community member. So thank you.
Anything else? Did I cover it? Oh. We need to state our name. I am Jessica Aston, and this is Julia Aston.
I just wanted to say Julia Aston has very nice printing. I remember seeing it on the wall.
Anybody else from the audience?
Oh, go ahead. All right. I'll go. You should probably pick it up into a really, because it's hard to, it's hard to compare what I have to say with what we've heard from our parents. I'm Principal Vitterman from Ora Grande, President Maston, Superintendent Aspire, and board members, thank you so much. I really just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for this chance and this opportunity. I'm definitely not perfect in this, but I'm taking, I'm taking this role really, really to heart. I'm doing everything I can to learn about classical education. I see the fire that it's creating. And you can feel it within our, just within our school with two teachers doing it. You can see the difference. You can sense it. And you can see that with, with our parents' faces. I have many testimonies. I could read them all. I did bring one if you'd like to hear it. It's similar to what we have with ones that have been through the education system and ones that are now seeing it classical. So I'll go ahead and read it because I, I'm not as smart as some of the ones that have been speaking, so this will make me sound smart reading somebody else's words. I'm going to take the student's name out of it. I think I'll do that since they're not here, so if I screw up, I'm sorry. We are the parents of two children who are current students at Ora Grande Elementary School, our son who is a third grader, and our daughter who has enrolled in kindergarten classical program. While both our children have blossomed to Ora Grande, I have seen her exceed in ways I've never could imagine. When we first heard about the classical program, we were unsure. We had many questions. Would she struggle because of the advanced curriculum? Would she still get to play and be a five-year-old girl? What types of lessons would she be learning? Is the teacher qualified? Yes, she is. Would, I added that. Would she be successful and love school as much as our son does? We had all these questions and more. After talking about it with the Ora Grande staff, friends, and our daughter, we decided to take the plunge and enroll her, and I am so thankful that we did. She is beaming every day when she comes to, comes home from school. She is singing nursery rhymes and teaching them to her older brother, telling us about the stories she has read, counting by fives and tens and counting to 100-plus, reading and sounding out simple words, writing her name, writing her name in simple words and talking about being kind and helping others. Mrs. Morgan has done a phenomenal job developing this program in its first year, and it's going to get better than we could have ever expected. She has shown nothing but kindness, compassion, and unwavering persistence to make sure our daughter is successful and happy as she can be. We are looking forward to many years of watching her grow and develop in the classical program. I think with this chance that you guys are giving us, I think we'll see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Barney. I have a daughter in Mrs. Morgan's class in the classical program. We were very skeptical. My husband and I fought over this several times, putting her in it, because I used to teach at an elementary school and I knew that she would get a solid foundation if we had her on our traditional track. And I knew my daughter would be successful. He fought for this because he saw the classical elements. He's a civics, history guy. That's his background. We had a good friend that encouraged me to do it, and I'm glad she did. Emily is doing very well there. I still have questions about, I've read the scopes and sequences and I still have questions, but I think the best way to answer those questions is to go ahead and do the investigation. What you're asking is to look into the feasibility and what would happen if we did it. I'd like to see what would happen because I don't want my daughter in a program that's going to go away and have all this knowledge just kind of like disappear unless we continue to push it. So I would like to see the research.
Thank you for having me, President Maston, board members, and Superintendent Aspire, and all of you. I'm Mrs. Morgan. I teach kindergarten at the classical program at Ora Grande. I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity. I've lived here since 1970. I graduated from our high school, my brother did as well, and so have our children. So I've seen a lot of things come and go. I've been teaching now for 17 years, and so I've taught both ways. I'm excited. I've seen a lot of differences, a lot of changes. I don't think it's about what's better. I think it's about choice, and we have choice in every other area of our lives. So we also want to have choice in educating our children. And so I think the doors are always open. Come in, check it out, come and see us, see what we do, and I think you'll be inspired as well. So thank you for your time tonight, and please feel free, come and see what we're doing. It's fantastic. If you have questions, comments, or concerns, just join us in our journey, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
Any more from the audience?
What, what are the number, you have two levels, is that right now?
Yes, sir. We have a kinder and a first.
What are the numbers?
We have 25, which we, we maxed it at.
25 in what?
25 in kindergarten. And we're at 18 in first grade. Our numbers were really low last year in kinder and we've actually added on to that. Our numbers were really low last year in kinder, and we've actually added on to that.
If I may add to that, right now, Ora Grande is our smallest school. We have about, I think it's three-hundred-and-thirty-six students goes at the last check. So right now, the kindergarten class is the biggest class, which is unusual. I think this is the first time in a long time that's been the case. And we have, we did hold that at twenty-five. We may not be able to continue to do that, because the other class is at twenty-seven, but we're sitting very tight in kindergarten, and have added many students in the kindergarten show.
Board discussion?
Okay, I'll go first. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Morgan and Ms. Kent for allowing me to come visit your classroom for the morning, classrooms for the morning last week. You're both wonderful teachers, we're really lucky to have you, and you're doing a great job. What I'm going to say is mostly be comments or questions. I don't expect any answers to most of my questions. My concern is not about the program, is that I think we're possibly being premature to jump into it right now. I think we should have given this another year. But this is before us, and I don't want to lose it. I don't wanna lose the program. So here are my, here are my concerns. One is concerning the rollout. Ora Grande teachers have been told that they will be able to stay at Ora Grande as long as they want to do this program. So I'd like to know, at this moment in time, what do Ora Grande teachers know about this program? Have they been in to observe it? Have they looked at the curriculum? What kind, what kind of timeline is there going to be for them to make this decision? And what about the other teachers in the district who are interested in moving over there? There has to be some policy, a transfer policy thought out, and perhaps a video or something loaded onto the website that people could go and, and teachers could go and watch a morning or a day in the classroom, because this, this is urgent. This is happening right now. This is October, and if we vote for this tonight, something has to be rolled out immediately. And as I mentioned at the work session, this is going to be very disruptive to Ora Grande, to the teachers. A change of this, at this level is going to be big, and there're gonna be some hurt feelings. For instance, what if the art teacher at Ora Grande does not like this program and doesn't want to do it? But what if no other art teacher in the district wants to transfer over? Will that art teacher have to stay at Ora Grande? I mean, you're gonna, this is just a little thing you're gonna run into, and there'll be a lot more, I'm just giving you an example of that kind of thing. Also, what about, I don't know what our marketing plan is going to be to educate Ora Grande parents, who also have to make a decision about what they want to do. And so there has to be something with the other parents who want to come over, something very orderly, a timeline. If you don't sign up by this date, then you don't get to stay at Ora Grande, you have to go anyway, you can't change your mind later. I'm telling you, we're throwing it all up in the air, but it looks like we may do that, but with deadlines, that kind of thing. And I assume that because, one of the reasons we would like to do this is to attract more students into our school district, that we probably will have to give, would want to give, parents who are outside of our school district first choice, or otherwise, that reason to do this goes, you know, goes down the drain. So think about that. We're giving parents who are outside of the school district first choice. Now, I'm not saying that's what the decision will be, I'm just giving you something to think about. Now, again, with this program, the art, the kindergarten and first grade teachers, all of the classroom teachers, will be, have a math, I'm sorry, music and an art curriculum. Will that then be given out to the Ora Grande art teacher and the Ora Grande music teacher? So as I'm reading all of this, and Mrs. Asire, thank you for everything you put together, it was very helpful. What, if you think about art, the art teacher has children doing things. The art teacher seldom does a lot of history. I know that history of art is in there, no doubt about that, but it's totally, it's totally different, the way this is going to be carried out. So that's going to have to be worked out about both art and music, who's responsible for what. And I can, I can see a conflict there. Now, when, I'm thinking about curriculum right now, and I remember, I used to teach mostly sixth grade, and I taught at Starline for years, and Smoke Tree, and I taught at Nautilus. And I always thought the sixth graders just had horrible, horrible handwriting. And, you know, you do what you can, but move on. So we, we always knew that these teachers at Ora Grande at the time, they did some fancy program, and we, you know, you know how, we all have opinions about things we know nothing about, and I was one of those, because everyone else who didn't work at Ora Grande had that opinion. And then I became the principal of Ora Grande, and the first week, I was in the sixth grade classroom, and I'm looking, I think, "Oh, my gosh, this, this handwriting, what is this?" And I walked and looked at the net. "How are they doing this? What are they doing?" Well, I found out that the class, the program that all the other teachers in the district put down, the Danilian program, which is no longer done at Ora Grande, it started in kindergarten, and every teacher there was just absolutely devoted to Danilian. And all it, I didn't need any research, I didn't do anything, it was right in front of me. Danilian worked. So one of the things I discussed with Mrs. Morgan and Ms. Kent is, and with Mr. Bitter, Mr. Bitterman, I didn't see any handwriting materials listed in, when I looked, I looked all the way up to sixth grade, I didn't see any handwriting materials listed at all. And just, again, what you've said is making the program your own. If something is not working, my recommend, don't continue doing it if there's something better, because you're gonna have to, we're gonna, I don't wanna put material, money into handwriting materials, just because it's already something you're using, and I don't even know where you got it from. If there's something that would work better, that's just what I'm saying. And also, a shout-out to Ora Grande. I hope your sixth graders' handwriting is just as good as it was back then. Some of the things, E.D. Hirsch, who created Core Knowledge, as I looked at the literature taught, I think he must be about my age, because I didn't read, I read Johnny Tremaine in the sixth grade, I didn't read it in the second or third grade. And I'm going quite, you know, just a minute, Johnny Tremaine in sixth grade was difficult enough, but you know, it's a, it's a great, because it's about the American Revolution. But Black Beauty in second grade, Maudlin, Kipling, I mean, these are old, 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 old standards. And I, again, I noticed that the, the school district, Mrs. Asire put up on the board, has changed the reading, the novels and the literature that the kids read. But again, if this does not resonate with our kids, and I'm, as a teacher, am a believer, if I'm the teacher and I'm teaching literature or a coin, what I teach best is what resonates with me. And I think every teacher who teaches literature is that way. So those are the things I want to be careful about. I have a note here, Hirsch must be old, so. Now, what, the curriculum is so rich, that there is no way that your kids are not gonna have homework. Now, I don't know about kindergarten and first grade, but there's so much memorization that is required, which, you know, remember, I love to memorize things. I mean, I, this was my curriculum, I get this. I love to memorize, but when's the last time we thought, "Oh, memorizing is a great thing?" I think memorizing is like your brain, is like a muscle, and when you memorize it, helps your brain. I've always thought that, but that's old school. No, that's new school, I'm sorry. That is a big change. But parents and homework, I don't know what you're finding, but from what I'm reading and hearing, parents don't want their kids to have homework, both the mom and the dad work, and the only time they have together is, is at night, and they resent having a lot of homework. Maybe it'll be fine. Maybe you'll get all the parents who love to do that kind of thing, and they'll all move over to Ora Grande, you know, it'll work. But it's, yeah, good luck on that. Another, another concern I have is, in buying these materials for first kindergarten through sixth grade, okay, that's, that's going to be expensive, but I'm also concerned, because we have five other elementary schools in the district, and they have not had resources in a very long time. And now, we have an infusion of money, thank you to our legislature and our governor, and where is the equity in that? Has that been thought out? How is that going to work? Because those other schools cannot wait any longer either, for them to have materials. I just talked to a teacher the other day, this is October, she's already spent a thousand dollars for classroom materials. So I don't, and I know other teachers over the years have spent more by the end of the year. Let's see. Now, one thing, and I discussed this with Mrs. Asire, but please, and I'm, this is not an opinion, I guess, I guess it is an opinion, but I think she just said that twenty-five students in kindergarten is too many. Twenty-five students in kindergarten is too many. You and I talked about that, and I think you agree with me, right?
That's our, that's our staffing max right now.
Okay, but.
Do I think that's too many? I think that's just right.
Well, it's not, I'll tell you that right now. And I'll tell you another thing, is that there should not be four-year-olds in this program. And my, my observation was, is that four-year-olds are not only ready, but this is what happens, this is how you corrupt a system. I'm not gonna talk about how bad that is for the four-year-olds, I've already discussed this with Mrs. Asire. What happens is, most teachers, when a child is not getting it, and a child is not being successful, is pulled to that child. Four-year-olds, it doesn't mean they're not right, it's just that they're four years, four years old. They're just not ready for the curriculum, so they're not being successful. So not only does the teacher go over and continue helping that child, but the teacher's not available to the other children. And when a volunteer, a volunteer came into the classroom, guess who the volunteer went to help? Not the low five-year-old who's on the edge and could make, would make it with some help. That volunteer went over and worked with the four-year-old child. It's not a good use of resources, you have to triage. And so I'm, I'm putting my objection in, that putting four-year-olds in the kindergarten program, no four-year-olds, please. I also, I imagine you've already anticipated this, but there is going to be a need for a leader in every grade level, trying to pull all of this together. You took, Ms. Kent and Mrs. Morgan, you can be the leaders in kindergarten and first grade, but you're gonna have, what, two or three teachers in fourth grade or fifth grade, and this is all brand-new to them. And somebody's gotta keep them all together and help them make decisions for that grade level and what to do, and who your leaders are. Been thinking, Mr. Bitterman now, who those leaders are going to be. Also, I'm sure the board, and I would ask this, if we could be given some kind of a report, maybe monthly, on the enrollment patterns in this program. Where are these students coming from? Are they coming from outside of our district? How many of them are coming from outside of our district? How many of them are coming from other schools within the district? How many of our Ora Grande students have transferred out of Ora Grande? And also, parent satisfaction. And one of the most important questions in parent satisfaction is what some of the parents brought up tonight. Do you notice a difference in your child's knowledge? You got a, you've got a fifth grader who's gone all the way through, and now he's, he's in this core knowledge program. Do you notice a difference in what your child knows about cultural literacy, about our world, his world? Do you notice an excitement about it? And that's, to me, probably the most important question. Now, anticipating, I'm gonna talk a minute about evaluation and the summative assessment. There is so much knowledge thrown in every day in the classroom, in, what is it, third grade, second grade, they introduced Ismus in the strait. Most kids, of course, one of them's a body of water and one of them is a body of land, kids get very mixed up. There's just no way that these kids can be held accountable for every single thing that comes across. There's just too much knowledge in the course of a day. When you go in, you have an objective as a teacher, you teach the objective, and you might mention some things, but you can't, you can't make the, give a unit test on every single thing in this curriculum. And I'm very happy about that, because I don't like the state standards. I don't mind having state standards, but I don't like being tested, having the kids tested on the state standards. I think that's a corruption, and that's what has prevented us from having a curriculum, a rich curriculum like this, because the state standards force us to narrow everything down, and the teacher teaches very narrowly. So the, let's say the third grade teachers are going to have to get together on every unit test, and they're gonna have to write it together. What will be assessed? What will be assessed? And some things are not going to be assessed, because there's not, not enough time for, to do that, as far as the kids being held accountable for everything. I'd like to talk about the evaluation of teachers. I don't know that our evaluation instrument is going to work for this. It might, or it could be, be modified, but as far as we focus on student engagement, I'm just, I'm just saying, start looking at the evaluation instrument now, as far as what you're gonna be able to do with our teachers, or you're gonna have to have a totally new evaluation instrument. I think you will have to modify it. And the last thing that I want to say is, I encourage all of you to go home and Google two words, unstructured play versus structured play. And I brought this up at the work session. The Rand, I'm pretty sure the research I read was from the Rand Corporation. They do a lot of research on kindergarten. They have for a long time, but I've looked for it and I can't find it. And unstructured play, well, it's kind of like going to recess, but I'm talking about in the classroom. Unstructured play, there is no goal. There, there, you just, the kid, today, the kid goes over to the table where the puppets are, and in the afternoon, he goes over to the table where the construction materials are, and he can do whatever he wants, and other kids are there, and he learns to socialize and get along and share and do all those kinds of things. And the research that I read said that by the third or fourth grade, the academic advantage seems to have disappeared. But what the children with, who engaged in unstructured play, particularly in kindergarten, they have those social and emotional, that kind of intelligence, and they have become your leaders. And I am very concerned about that. And I talked to both of the teachers about having centers in the classroom where there's absolutely unstructured play that goes on, that allows the kids to do those kinds of things. So those are, those are my concerns, and so I have spelled them out. And I don't know that I have anything else to say. I probably do, but I came to the end of my paper, and I turned it over, and there's not anything there. So that's all, and that's enough for one evening.
I have a couple questions. How many kindergartens have you got out there? Just one?
Two.
You got two?
We had two.
And then, how many first grade?
We had two through every grade.
Oh, you do?
Yes, sir.
So really, when this program goes in, are you gonna have the, is this gonna parallel the other program, or is the idea to make it completely?
To go complete.
Oh.
And the other piece of that is that every student who already attends Ora Grande would be a puppet. So they wouldn't have to.
Okay, but I guess.
Or chose not to take them.
Yeah. I guess what I'm saying, though, is if, would it, would it be a more of a cautious approach to have it parallel, and then see what the, over a period of time, what the demand is? You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying.
Okay.
Because we, that was the original intent, was to expand it at a grade level, one class to see.
Right.
But what, and Mr. Bitterman could probably address this much better than I can, one of the issues is that it's a little bit divisive to the school. Because you've got, you know, teachers can't plan together because they're doing different Students are talking to each other, why am I not doing that in my classroom? And there's those kinds of things happening. And so it tends to be divisive as opposed to unified. And the idea that the synergy that would be created with everyone doing it allows them to do more things as a school.
And then the final thing here is that on it, it says approval would allow staff to begin more intense research for curriculum training and hiring the staff prior to final approval. So really, what we're, we're, we're looking at possibly this program expanding next year depending upon that last, that last curriculum.
So the intent was already to go to second grade. We have the materials for one classroom at second grade right now. So what we would like to do is put together, what would we actually have to purchase? What kind of training would need to be involved with? So actually, what would it cost us to do this?
Okay.
What would be the commitment from the board and from the district if we were to go K six? It might be that we say, you know, we start K four completely to start with and there could be a number of recommendations. But frankly, if the board is not interested in allowing us to do this, then there's not a point in putting a lot of time into gathering all of the information, researching their curriculum, checking out the prices, all of that.
So this would be, if this motion passes, it's an interim step?
Yes.
If it would come back and make a accord?
Right.
And some of it will be dependent upon the parents buying in and wanting this, right? I mean, all of a sudden, you say that Ora Grande is the smallest school. It could become even smaller if a significant number of parents said, look, I'd rather not, I'd rather go with what has been the tradition here.
I would suppose that that could happen. I wouldn't predict that that would happen just based on the response. And I think part of it is the size of our kindergarten has reflected that. Right now, we have students that didn't necessarily pick the program, in the program, and they're doing great because it's intended for everybody. We haven't had anybody asked to be out of it, even though they didn't really choose the program because the classes are divided pretty evenly.
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing that up, I mean, I sort of went through this type of a program in a private school, in a Catholic school. But the thing is, I just, I guess I'm like the air on caution so that all of a sudden we do something and it doesn't work out that way. That's why I was wondering if you would, if you planned on running that parallel or whatever, you know? That's the only reason I brought it up. I guess I'm sort of being the devil's advocate here. Okay?
Interesting.
All right.
Did you want to make any comments on that?
I know Kathy brought, you know, quite a few points, lots of points. But I can tell you that when I rolled it out to my staff, our positive direction was that we were going to go through this together. We've given them the opportunity to learn more about it, just like I am. And they're going to have a choice as well. They can, they can choose to be a part of the program, you know, or they can choose to do something else. I think we were really straightforward with how we approached that or how I approached that. Yeah, it's going to be a big step. And it's an undertaking and there's a lot of things that are going to go into it. You know, we're aware of the challenges and we, and, you know, having, just the two teachers is a challenge. Just because I can, I can see my staff see what they're doing and I know that a lot of them like to be a part of that. Bringing that to the parents and to the district, I'm speaking with a Green Hearts representative, one of the directors tomorrow, and they're going to give us some names of people that can come here and talk. So I think that's the biggest thing, is getting that word out, what does classical education look like and what doesn't look like? Really be informed and be upfront. Invite all our parents that are at our school because this change could happen. So I think just, like you said, eyes wide open, knowing the direction we want to go and just hoping that people will follow. I mean, that's our goal.
I think from my personal experience, the places that I have been where they have started classical charter schools, because that's been what has been traditionally there, they end up after a year or two with waiting lists. And that would be true for the charters that we have currently in Phoenix that are classical as well. When I did the survey last year, there were at least a half a dozen responses that people were not planning to stay because there wasn't opportunities like that for them. So I think for the, for the risk of it, we have a school site that's small, we can, we can really work to get it right, but I don't, I think if we don't work really hard to get it right as a school, it isn't going to really take off. And so that, that's why after a conversation with Mr. Bitterman and some of the things that he learned when he's been doing some of his training, because initially I always hesitated, I thought, well, we can't, you know, the kids are going to be at a point where if we start at the level of curriculum and they haven't had the precursor curriculum, they're not going to be successful. But there are ways to scaffold and you build it as you go. And so what our, what our sixth graders this year or next year, sixth graders, it won't be the same as sixth graders two years from now or four years from now because it'll continue to enrich. But the idea that you begin to do all of your training together, all of those things that help create that program are, to me, that's what's important.
Mrs. Cox?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
My name is Marsha Cox. I remember a couple of months ago, we were talking about declining student numbers that we had. And I know, also know that that was a concern in several other districts statewide, but I'm obviously concerned about my own school district. And just what that reasoning was, was it because parents were taking their children out of public school to put them into private schools, that kind of a thing? And I guess one of my observations was during some of the fundraising that we were doing during Rachel's Challenge, actually, a comment was made to me that our local Catholic Lady of the Lakes is actually starting a fundraising next month, so that would be November, to build their kindergarten through sixth grade school, to have a private Catholic school that is going to bring, it's going to take children out of our school. And that concerns me. Now, obviously, you know, you're going to put your kids where you're going to put your kids. But if we're concerned about declining attendance or declining students now, if we have another kindergarten through sixth grade that's a private school, what's that going to do?
Classical.
And it's a classical. I'm very concerned about that. I know that I've heard conversations where in discussing this classical education with people that actually have their child or children in a private school and the conversation being something to the effect of, well, if this was in a public school, what would you think about that? And the comment was, boy, you know, I might reconsider putting my child in public school. To me, I had to stop and think about that because I thought, wow, you know, if you're actually thinking about taking your child out of a private school and bringing them back into public school, I had to stop and pause and take notice of that. That was a huge comment for me because that's what we have to do to bring these kids back into our public schools is to bring something that parents want. And they, I mean, if, if we have a K through six being built that we're going to compete with, I mean, that's, that's really scary for me. And four-years-old, respectfully, one of the, one of the things that we had to do to compete with the kindergarten that the Lady of the Lakes has is to, you know, reduce our age to four because they were getting four-year-olds.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say something because about the four-year-old, I don't know how many four-year-olds we have. I'm familiar with one four-year-old that started, but she, the student tested in and, and was only four for like a month, like barely missed the cutoff. So it wasn't like a just-turned-four-year-old starting the program. So unless I'm mistaken about.
District-wide, we can accept four-year-olds if they have a birthday prior to December 31st, if they test that they're ready to be there. And that's, it's several criteria. So we only have a few district-wide. There really aren't very many. I don't know specifically at Ora Grande how many there are.
I would request at the end of the year, a report for the board on the, how many four-year-olds were held back in kindergarten at the end of the year for next year.
Four-year-olds that were enrolled.
That are enrolled now, but end up being held back. And I'll skip an eye on those, it's like those who go on to first grade, how are they doing? Let's do that.
Well, I'm going to take a turn here. I've listened to everybody. And the first thing I want to tell you is, I'm a football fan most days, standing up, swinging the flag. And when I'm a football fan, I, I like the Arizona Cardinals, as much as they're bad this year, I like the Arizona Cardinals. And when Bruce Arians was the coach, he had a saying, and that saying was, no risk it, no biscuit. You don't put it out there, you're not going to get it. To that end, we started our experiment this year in a magnet school at Ora Grande. And I would have expected, in the time I've been on the board, to get letters, not email, not text messages, not Facebook stuff, letters, people actually writing out and signing a piece of paper. I would have expected to get letters on big things, on important things. Here we are, we've got a two-grade program at Ora Grande and I'm getting letters. People are actually taking the time to write me. And when they write, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, and with respect to the family and students, I'm not going to put their names out there. But here we are, it says, now that we have completed the first quarter of school, I feel that we have made the right choice. Not only has her confidence skyrocketed, but she is enjoying first grade. Her comprehension of literature, math, history, science, and many other social skills is beyond impressive. We have never limited our daughter's learning abilities because we feel that at this young age, she's like a sponge. And I'm sure all other children at this age are as well. This letter came from a parent that I know personally. And I'll just read a part of the opening paragraph as well. She spent two years at the Smoke Tree Developmental Preschool and had to carry an eye to Deborah If we can take a child from Child Fund and put them in, after two years at the developmental preschool, and put them into the classical magnet program at Ora Grande and develop them to a point where they're performing at grade level, I know that this young lady has been on principal's honor roll at Ora Grande, if we can do this, we're on to something. Now, I know Mrs. Cox has concerns, but as I listened to her, some things that I just observed, Demilian worked, no research. She talked about memorizing. I sent my children, including my 12-year-old who is developmentally disabled, who had a grave four in her ventricular hemorrhage when she was born, to a program called A One. It's Bible memorization. They both memorized scripture. They're both in elementary school. They both have to perform recitals weekly of whatever they're given to memorize. Memorization is not going to hurt a child and even, even my little disabled 12-year-old daughter can do it. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Homework. I like homework. I don't like a ton of homework. I don't like no homework. Homework is something where you need to take your work home and be responsible for it and we should be developing responsibility at some level. And state standards, I don't think we can put in a program that doesn't at some level conform to state standards. Superintendent Sire, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Students will continue to be assessed on the state standards.
So our program is going to have to prepare students to take the dreaded test. But I can pretty much assure you that this is done elsewhere in our state, that this programming is out there and they take the state test and they perform well on it and they move up. They move from third grade to fourth grade without any issue and all of the other waypoints. And like I said, if, if I'm getting actual letters from parents, not one parent, but parents, if I run into people in town and they say, oh my goodness, what did you guys do at Ora Grande? This is great. We're doing something right. And I point back to the back wall and I say, there's the mission statement. And it says, scholarship, character, and humanity, that's what we teach. That's what we expect our students to learn about. And if that's our mission, if that's what we're doing, this fits it very well. So my little business friend sits up here and goes, this all fits like a really neat jigsaw puzzle. My last thought is, we have our differences. We have our different thought processes and sometimes we're like a big 600-person family that clash, we butt heads. But at the end of it, we have great leadership in this district. It's all over our district that we have great leadership. We have great employees. I think we can challenge ourselves a little bit with something like this, come out with something that, that is unique, I think for the most part in Arizona, and do something like this in a public school. And while everybody else is running around going, how do we deal with the charter schools? How do we deal with the private schools? Oh my goodness, look at these vouchers. Regardless of the outcome of an election, if we can actually hang our hat up at the end of the day and say, we did something right to start putting kids back in public schools and helping our student body as a whole throughout the district, whether this is in one school district-wide, stops at sixth grade, or goes all the way up into the high school, we've done at least part of this the right way and we're attracting children back to our district. I think this is the right move all the way around. And with that, I will shut up, ask for any more questions, any more comments. If there are none, then I think we can vote.
I have a comment. I'd like to respond to what you said. You must not have heard me, or I did not make myself clear. I thought I said that I believe in memorization. It's considered something now that is not a good thing, but I believe in memorization. I just want to make that clear. I was probably known as a teacher as the homework queen. I look back, I still feel guilty. And the reason that I gave homework was, first of all, it reinforces their daily learning and helps them get it stored in their head, but number two, it helps them become responsible and that, and develop a work ethic. And I believe in both of those. My comment about the state standards, I'm glad you brought that up, something that I thought about and didn't put on my list. There is, we want, we look at the, what, we're, the subscription that we have for Crane, we got a good explanation of how that works, but there is no way that these teachers at Ora Grande can be referring to the state standards and those materials and the core knowledge curriculum. They might work it out over two or three years and blend them together, but the stress on those teachers, if they think that they have got to be responsible for the state standards and core knowledge, that you just, unless you've taught elementary, you just don't understand. It can, it cannot be done. It can be worked out and blended. So I want, I want to make that clear. So when our Ora Grande kids take the state test, if they don't do that well, I don't care because they're getting a better curriculum than the state standards would provide. I don't care. But that's because I don't care about the accountability feature. You know, you know how I feel about the state test. So I want to make that very clear, that I'm, I'm saying that just as firmly as I spoke about four-year-olds in kindergarten. And I don't want to get off into that. You would have, you would have had to have been a teacher to get it. And then the last thing is, is. And then the last thing is, is Denilian. There's plenty of research on Denilian handwriting. What happened the day that I saw the sixth graders, I didn't need on the spot to do any research. I saw, what, six years, seven years really of doing Denilian. I didn't need anything else. That's all I needed. And then I could go do my research. But the evidence spoke for itself. Just to clarify your comments, Mr. Mastin.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox.
You're very welcome.
And if I could return to the Denilian comments that I made, I believe I just said no research. And the reason why I found that interesting is because here we have parents in a similar situation to what you experienced with Denilian showing up at our boardroom, giving us anecdotal evidence, which is what you made your initial decision on Denilian on, saying that this is a great program. And I think that the reference is apt.
You're talking about handwriting?
I'm talking about, you saw a handwriting program, and you said, based on what you saw in classrooms, there was no need, you didn't need research at that point. You knew that this was a good program. I'm saying that I've got parents out here, and I've got parents writing the actual letters.
About handwriting?
About the magnet.
That's my issue. I'm talking about is the handwriting, because I talked to the kindergarten and first-grade teachers about handwriting. Mr. Mastin, don't interrupt me. You have a way, when you want to speak and I want to speak, you won't let me speak. So I want to speak. I talked to the kindergarten and first-grade teachers about my concern with handwriting. We had an anecdotal incident tonight of a child who's done very well with handwriting, and that's wonderful. But that's not what I saw with the handwriting program. It had nothing to do with the teacher. It was the materials that were being used and the process and so forth. I saw it, I witnessed it. One child that I know of has done well, and I'm glad about that. So that's all there is to say. You go out and you observe, and then we can talk about this. I'm done.
Mrs. Moore, do you have another one?
I did. Thank you.
Wendy Moore, I'm a parent. And, you know, I would have really liked this to be available for my kids. I have struggled with homework with both my kids to even get on the same page, to understand what they're doing. And I feel like going back to a classical education where you can actually, I can actually get on the same page with my kid and go back and research things and understand where the teacher's coming from, so I can help them with their homework, is hugely valuable at a family. And then that also goes out into your community, where you can help others learn. Like, my daughter can help her friend learn, or, you know. So I think, I'm all for this, the classical education, and I hope that we roll it out to this school and the rest of the district, because I think it would be completely life-changing for our community. Do you fathom how much talent we could draw to our community by having this kind of curriculum being taught? The professional positions that we need like crazy here because of the class of older generation that we have, that we draw here, it would be huge. So that's my feeling on the subject. To the point of being four-years-old, I was four-years-old when I started kindergarten, and I did great. So, just that way.
All right. I think, Mrs. Cox, tomorrow, we're gonna let you speak, and I think we've got this horse about. Go ahead. Please be brief, though.
I'll try to make it very brief. I'm very much in favor of extending the program. You already have testimony from parents here. How many parents have we had come to the board meetings? These parents love the program, or they wouldn't even attend. I attended both parochial and public school, and I've seen the best of both. Give yourself a chance to see the best of both of these programs. I know there's concern by some people of memorization. Believe it or not, in parochial school, we had to memorize a lot of things, didn't we, Mr. Moore?
Everything.
And did it hinder you, or did it help you to know more? We memorized even the times tables. Oh, my goodness, I went to one school in Spring Valley, the principal told me it was immoral to have the kids memorize the times table. What is wrong? I think you're giving the kids another opportunity to a special form of education. Parents are pulling their kids out of school for some reason. They're doing homeschooling. They're going to other schools. And the worry about having 25 in the classroom? My daughter has 30 on HPA. The kids are reading at third-grade level by the time they get out of kindergarten. I think you can do this also at Ora Grande. Give yourself a chance to let these kids expand the vocabulary. You've heard from the parents also, that the kids come home, they're excited about what they've learned. They discuss it with the family. The family's brought in to the discussion. Yes, there's some homework, but homework never killed anybody. It expanded your knowledge and your ability to retain what you've learned. Thank you for your time. God bless you, and God bless America.
One comment. You know, I don't think asking questions from the board, you know, is just being proof. I mean, and that is, just wondering about some things. And it doesn't mean that asking those questions that were opposed to this. It's just that you ask questions so that all of a sudden, you don't go into something, and then you have repercussions later and say, "Well, why didn't we look at that?" That's the only reason. And I think that's the reason Mrs. Cox raised some questions, and I raised those questions. That's it.
But you already have lovers from the parents.
Personally, my parents loved homework, because when we were doing homework, they weren't bothered with us. I mean, we could do homework until midnight, and there would have never been a complaint. I think it's wonderful, too. With my three kids, I felt the same way. Anyway.
All right. With that, I think we're ready to vote.
Can I say something, please, as a sixth-grade Ora Grande?
You just did.
Kind of moment to address the concerns.
Please, please make it brief.
I will. But, so as a sixth-grade Ora Grande, and being a part of this whole process, I want you to know what I'm hearing from our board, is exactly, Mr. Rooney was saying, it was that I'm hearing the thought process that we need to be taking, and I'm telling you that majority of those statements you made, we are thinking about those. There was a few things, I'm like, "Oh, yeah, we need to think about that as well." So that's what I heard, was not that this was a negative thing. I heard, if you're going through this process, these are the things you need to be thinking about, and I want to let you know, being at Ora Grande, going through this process, we are thinking about those things. And there's many things that we have two months to lay out. And that, I did ask a couple to say, let's see if I had any responses. Sorry. I do have one that says that they're struggling with Crane, and that they look forward to possibly this opportunity to have this curriculum. So that is something. But it's because we don't have a curriculum that we're being able to use, and so they're having to come up with their own, so to have that opportunity. I also wanna say, going to Great Hearts and speaking to them, they don't send math homework home, because their parents struggle with it, because it is Singapore math. And if you have an understanding of Singapore math, it's what Common Core was derived from. So it is something that we need to understand. If you need, you need to know a history of everything that's in that curriculum. So they send appropriate work home. It's what I understand from ours, it's directly for home, encourage conversation and such. So the homework that is being sent home in our two-grade levels is not anything on top of it, but also regarding memorization, we are still doing that in the third grade when, you know, and in the second grade, and in the first grade to memorize our math facts. So it hasn't gone away, and it won't be something new, and that every, pretty much everything you've addressed is something where they are, they count. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 6.8 is presentation and review of policies IDH, IDH-R, and IDH-E, special instructional programs. Superintendent Sire?
Just for the board's information, Mrs. Wolf, she was on the board's agenda. So thank you. President Mastin, members of the board, it is recommended that the board suspend Governing Board Policy BGB, which is policy adoption, related to a first and second reading, and approve this presentation of revisions to revised policies IHB, IHBR, and IHBE, special instructional programs. The State Board of Education, back in October of 2017, adopted rules in the area of special education. These policies, along with the regulation and exhibit, have been adjusted to conform with that regulation that was adopted by the State Board. Primarily, there are some procedural aspects that have been changed. There's not much in the essence that has been changed, but there are a lot of changes in this policy. And as you have probably noted, when we looked at it before, it is very lengthy. And so, actually, we did have a directive from the State Board of Education that we needed to submit, that the board had adopted this by November 1st. They actually have extended that policy, or, excuse me, that deadline. And so if the board would like to consider it as a first reading and have this come back for a second, that would be acceptable. If you would be willing to suspend this and let us get it moving, that would be preferred by us, even though the deadline has been adopted, because there are some things we need to roll out for our staff.
We have a suggested motion that you may make if you so choose. I think they'll be even talking with Carrie, she would prefer the expedited track.
Are you calling?
I'm calling for a motion.
Are you gonna read it? I move to suspend the Governing Board Policy BGB, policy adoption, related to a first and second reading, and approve this presentation of revised policies IHB, IHBR, and IHBE, special instructional programs.
Second. Discussion?
We discussed a lot in the work session. I hope we don't have to go through that discussion.
Carrie, now, Carrie, I'll ask for the vote.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 6.9 is approval of vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds. Mr. Moore?
Mr. President, members of the board, it's recommended that the Governing Board approve the vouchers for September 2018, as well as student activity and auxiliary funds for grades K through 12, including at the district office. I'll entertain a motion on 6.9.
Make the motion. We approve 6.9 as presented.
Second. Any discussion on 6.9? Carrie?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item number seven are informational reports. Superintendent Sire?
Thank you, Mr. Mastin. I know it is late. We do have a couple of written reports in the packet. I would like to share a couple of things, if I may. The partnership that we have with ASU, and I know that, Mr. Mastin, you and Mrs. Cohen were involved in a meeting with our ASU digitaries from down in Phoenix back in the fall. That working relationship has, I believe, helped to lead to the approval of ASU here in Lake Havasu will now be offering a teacher certification program for both elementary and secondary teachers, which means that we can grow our own teachers, they can go to ASU locally and get their certification. That was approved this week by the ASU in Phoenix. So that is very exciting news, and I would like to compliment Dr. Maguire, the director, because he's worked extremely hard to get this to happen. As you may know, the university's had a larger bureaucracy, and this is very exciting for us. The other thing I would like to mention is that we had wonderful comments about Rachel's challenge this morning, or this evening, rather, and that was a huge effort. Everybody in the community was involved in that, and for anybody who participated, you could see the impact that it had on our students. One of the important pieces is the annual chain reaction with all of the 10th-grade students. We were able to, in our Title IV funding that we received for this year, we were able to get approved the expenditures for the chain reaction, so that we can use our Title IV grant for next year, which means we have a guarantee that at least next year, we can do the 10th-grade chain reaction again. We cannot cover any of the food or anything else, so we're hoping to perpetuate. We have donations that will be able to cover that. But again, we were able to serve all of the 10th graders in the community if their schools were willing to participate. So very excited to know we're gonna be able to continue that. So the hard work and effort of that committee has paid off. And then, I think our middle grades came out, we talked a little bit about that. We have many exciting things happening in our district that are positive. And just for your information, there's a parade on Saturday.
Yep.
We will be featuring all of our schools, our teachers of the year. We were going to put one of our brand-new vests to help thank everybody for the bond, but all of our vests are gonna be in use on Saturday. So we're gonna have the mustache vest, which is the old standard. And we're very excited about celebrating our community as it's rated.
Item eight is our second call to the public. Do you have anything, Carrie? Last point is communications.
What about board members?
I'm sorry?
Board members? Is there a board member? Are board members not on there anymore?
They are. They are. Do you have a report?
I do.
Okay.
So it'll be very quick. So I've been trying to get to this living wage. I hear all the time, I've been trying to understand how we get to the living wage. And I'd be happy to talk with anybody afterwards. What I came across was an MIT living wage calculator for Mojave, well, it's for every county in the country. But, so I pulled Mojave Counties. And then I also went to the NEA to use their teacher, how much do you make an hour for the teacher? So, because the living wage calculator from MIT is based on an hourly rate, so it seems to, and I could be off-base, but it seems to have worked out great, that the NEA calculator is what gives you an actual hourly rate. So I plugged in two different numbers. I plugged in just our base starting salary teacher, I did it for classified as well, but for the base starting salary teacher, I plugged in the 33, 750, 187 days, and eight hours a day, and I got an hourly rate of 23, 44. And then I did the same thing using the full compensation package, because the NEA calculator does ask for all those additional things. I just didn't plug them in individually. And then it came up with an hourly rate for a starting teacher of 36, 75. So when I looked at the living wage calculation, and again, I could be off-base somewhere here, but it looks as though, even though we're not where we wanna be with our teacher salaries, I don't know that we ever will be, but we are above the living wage, and by far, for our starting teacher salaries. So anyways, I'll hang around, I'm happy to, you know, send the links to anybody or show anybody, but I'm trying to get to what that living wage means, 'cause, you know, I'm always trying to get to the answer somehow. So I don't know if this is a way to do it, but it seems like that's using two different resources to try to get there, so.
Eight hours a day, so 40-hour weeks?
Well, again, you know, yes. I can't account, I'm not a teacher, so I can't account for all the additional hours. But normally, the NEA uses six hours. I mean, that's what they say, people assume, teachers, and I put in eight, just to account for extras, so. Anyways. That's it.
Can the board report? Does your report, if I have a committee report?
I was gonna have a report, but I read plain speaking years ago, and Harry Truman said, "If you're the last guy up, don't say much, and everyone will appreciate it." I thought.
Any suggestions for future agenda items? Any clarifying questions from the press? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second. What is the fastest motion you have? What is the fastest motion?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes, we are adjourned.